Okay, is everybody ready? I'd like to call to order the class, it's a school committee meeting on Wednesday, December eighteenth. It's now seven PM. Can I have a roll call, please?
President Paul Kearney.
President Ashley Caleri.
President Ellen Marr.
President Jen Madden.
President Craig Mclewen.
Thank you. I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the pledge of allegiance if you'd like.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, all school committee meetings are televised and recorded. Is there any public comment for any items not on the agenda? No? Okay, so we'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Okay, well, thank you. As we get closer to the holidays, things are doing great in the schools. We've got a lot going on. Today, we have Margaret Curley, who's a senior at Cohasset High School and is involved in many things. And we met her a couple of school committee meetings ago. And Margaret is going to be updating on some of the happenings of the last couple of weeks here in Cohasset. And then if you have any questions for Margaret. I told Mark Margaret has a lot going on tonight, so I told her I'd let her go after her report. And then any questions that the committee might have for her. But Margaret, glad to have you here, and I'll let you update the committee.
Okay. So a few updates we have around the school. We want to recognize the fantastic band, the Chorus Holiday Concerts, that have taken place over the last two weeks across the district. The Joseph Osgood School participated in Philly Cruiser yesterday to donate toys to Toys for Tots, which is a cause that is being contributed to throughout the high school and middle school as well. Winter sports are off to a great start. The girls' hockey team is preparing for a home opener game tonight against Pepperdough. And the boys' basketball team had a great win last night against Atlanta's Charter. This Friday, the seventh grade students will be presenting their projects on the novel Hidden Figures from ten to eleven AM in the Learning Commons. This unit utilized a cross-disciplinary approach teaching the novel, so we are excited to witness the success of this project-based learning unit and to witness the hard work of our seventh graders. The superintendent's Student Advisory Council met last week to discuss our mission and establish some goals in addition to our main focus of improving student voice throughout the district. Among those goals were to improve the connectivity between students, therefore helping them academically and socially, as well as to work with the district administration to help inform the student body about administrative and school-wide changes and initiatives in an efficient and intuitive way. We are eager to invite the elementary school representatives to our next meeting. Lastly, I have a quick update on what has been happening with the Safe Harbor Youth Ambassadors these past few weeks. Yesterday, a few of our Cohasset middle and high school students took part in sticker shop. For the past two years, Curtis Lickers has graciously invited the youth ambassadors to come in and place stickers discouraging underage drinking and purchasing alcohol for minors on beer cases throughout the stores. This time, we designed holiday-themed stickers, but we hope to take part in sticker shop again around graduation time, as these are both times where minors are particularly likely to have access to alcohol. The rest of our youth ambassadors continued rehearsing for their performance of Samantha Skunk, which will be taking place in January at the Osgood. Samantha Skunk, just as a reminder, is a show written to be performed for children in grade levels K through four with the intention to teach children to only take medication with a grown-up subscription.
Great. And I want to praise Margaret's work with Safe Harbor. All the steering team that has done amazing work with that, as she has other ventures too, so... Any questions or thoughts that Margaret may want to weigh in on?
Well, Margaret, I know you interned for Safe Harbor this past summer. Do you want to... Do you have like a few things you could tell us about that experience?
About my internship?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this summer, I actually had two projects that I was working on, one of which was to do an art project to humanize recovery. So I'm working with Drug Story Theater. They actually have performed at our school before. I believe it was three years ago. And basically, it's a group of kids who are in recovery, who are performing their stories of recovery to other students to try to prevent future drug use. So I'm working with them to create a curated art exhibit based on humanizing recovery. So I've met all of those lovely individuals, and I've taken photos of objects that they feel represent their recovery story, and I've taken quotes from them. And we're hopefully going to have it displayed in April when they come back to perform.
That's exciting. Yeah, we want Drug Story Theater to come back in the spring. That's our goal at the high school. Principal Scott's team's goal, when they talked about what they were going to collaborate with, with Safe Harbor's. We did have Drug Story Theater come last year to work with our middle school.
Okay.
So it would be a nice... That was a middle school geared show, so it would be getting the same thing. That's a great collaboration that we're excited about. And just a note about the work we did as the superintendent, school committee, student advisory council. What was amazing is when we did the same, basically the same activity we had done at the Safe Schools Committee, and the same word popped out, which is that word of connectivity, the idea of being connected. Connected as a student body, student body connected with the administration. When we worked with a mostly parent-driven group with the Safe Schools Committee, it was parents feeling connected to what's happening in the schools and the students. And so that's a nice overarching theme that keeps coming up, and certainly something we're trying to drive towards. So it was nice to hear the students with that as well. Activities such as Challenge Day, which is all about connection with students, which I'm hugely successful at the high school. And the efforts that are coming out of that as well. It's nice to see that staying alive in the building. I know the seniors had done some work at lunch where they... You can fill in the details, but I think it was something about they had a color that they chose.
Yeah, so there's different colored candy canes. At the beginning of lunch, we all had to pick a candy cane, and then we were told to sit at a lunch table with people who liked colored candy canes. So it forced us for one day to sit with people that we don't normally sit with. And it was... It worked really well for the seniors. We talked about how maybe with the middle schoolers, it wouldn't work so well, but how everyone had to kind of buy into it for it to work. And it worked really well for us. We're also doing a gift swap tomorrow with our family groups from July. So it's nice that we're continuing to support.
It's wonderful. So at the Challenge Day, Principal Scott is here, obviously, so you can jump in if you want. But at the Challenge Day, we had what they called small family groups. So we did a lot of our reflective work. So it's nice to see that those groups are continuing to get to know each other in a more connected way. It's wonderful. So we talked about what that will look like at the middle school if we did some of those activities with our middle school students. And they agreed that that activity might not work, but they were very committed to trying to lead something like that at the middle school that would work with their peers. So that's just great stuff. So I'm very excited about that. Anything else from Margaret?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful update. Thank you, Margaret. I'll let you go now, so you can get to your work. Good luck. Okay. So next up on our superintendent's report, we have a student junior, Sean Thornton, who is in the midst of his Eagle Scout Award. He's working towards it. And he's going to present to us a gift that he'd like to donate to the schools. So Sean, you can run right up here. Sean is also here with his father, Sean Thornton. You stand... Stand... That's it right there. Right on this. You can sit down if you'd like. I know, it seems like you've got to stand. Okay, stand's great. You know, you're going through what we all go through with the pole. There's really no good place to sit or stand, so you can do it outside. So Sean, maybe tell us a little bit about the gift and your project, and what you hope to do with that.
Well, as you know, I'm Sean Thornton, and I'm Senior Patrol Leader of Troop Twenty-Eight. And so my Eagle Scout project is to build three benches in the grassy area in between the auditorium door and the main office door. As after coming here as a student for six or so years, I've noticed that as students wait to be picked up by their parents, they typically either climbed on that tree or just leaned against the building. And so I figured that it would be a good idea to put some benches in, because it would be like a nice place for students to sit as they were picked up. And in your packets, I believe, there's a deck of that.
Yeah.
Oh, there's a blueprint that I made of where the benches would be going. And there would be three benches, two on each side and one in the middle. And they're made out of a plastic that's made out of recycled water bottles, and they would be durable, and they would be sustainable as recycling helps the environment. And each one would be four feet long, and maybe blue to fit the school's color.
That's wonderful. Well, it sounds useful and also environmentally friendly. That's great. It's part of our mission, too, is to be conscious in that. So that's wonderful. I'm proud that you're doing that. That's someone from our schools is achieving in that way, so thank you for that. And I turn to the committee for any thoughts or questions or acceptances in the field.
I think it's great. I have a question. Are these going to be permanently fixed or attached? I don't know what the right word is. Attached to the ground, or are they going to be like...
They would be cemented to the ground, yes.
Cemented in, okay.
So that way, they wouldn't blow around in a storm or be stolen.
Or be picked up and moved around, and so...
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, Sean, how... Good job, by the way. And this is going to benefit my kids, because I pull up here and they have no place to sit like that. It's wonderful. How many children do you think you could sit on each bench?
Comfortably, I would say about three.
Perfect.
But if each kid takes up a foot of space, then four.
Unless it's the football team.
That's wild, too. That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Sean, is this the last thing you have to do before you become an Eagle Scout?
This would be one of the final steps. The last thing I would have to do is I have three more merit badges that I need to... That are... So to earn Eagle Scout, you need to earn a total of twenty-one merit badges. And there are eleven that are Eagle Acquired, which are things like citizenship in the nation, citizenship in the community, family life, personal management, personal fitness, just to name a couple. And the other ones that are not Eagle Acquired are focused on like your interests. So I'm just... Some of mine are things like computer programming, digital technology, electronics, because I find an interest in technology. I like how... I know, I like how computers work and things like that. So I would have... I have three more Eagle Acquired merit badges that I need to finish.
After this.
Af... After this or during this? So it's in between now and the time I get the Eagle Scout project.
Okay, awesome. It's a tremendous accomplishment. I'm an Eagle Scout, so I wish you the best of luck, so you should be very proud of yourself.
Yeah, it is. It sounds telling, but it's one of those things that very few achieve, very few people achieve, and those who do, it really stays with you. It's something that, you know, you'll always have with you as a major accomplishment.
Absolutely.
It will show you that you can accomplish other things, too, that to others might seem difficult.
It's something that even as an adult, you kind of people, that you know as colleagues that are Eagle Scouts, it's something that carries a special level of respect, so...
That's right.
Yeah, you should be really proud of yourself.
Congrats. Good luck.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So you need a motion.
I would need a motion.
I have a motion to accept the generous gift of Eagle Scout Sean Thornton of three benches in front of Cohasset Elementary School.
So moved.
I have a second, please. Second. Jen. Roll call, please.
Aye, Paul Kearney.
Aye, Ashley Caleri.
Aye, Ellen Marr. Aye, Jen Madden.
Aye, Craig Mclewen.
Thank you very much. Excellent, thank you.
That's great. Great news. And next, we have Kathleen Sanchez, wonderful foreign language teacher, to talk about and fully approve for our annual Quebec trip. So can you go and take us a nice moment? Thank you for meeting in tonight.
I'm so proud of the teacher. We are now amazing the teens, really. Very proud of them. So my name is Cathy Sanchez, and I'm a French teacher in Cohasset Middle School. So I'm here to propose a three-day Quebec trip, field trip, for my grade eight French students for May first, second, and third. It'll be a Friday through Sunday. I'm just going to read. So this cultural excursion would give our students an opportunity to practice their language skills and learn the history and experience the culture of Quebec. Activities include a tour of the fortified old city, a visit to the maple sugar shack, where they will see the processing of maple sugaring and dance to traditional Quebecois music. Students will research sites to visit and keep a journal, scrapbook, during the visit. Our tour company is Jump Street Tours, who I have gone with several years. The bus is Eagle Tours, and we'll stay at the Hotel Plaza, which is just right outside of Quebec, a little bit outside. Our tour guide stays with us through three days. Kate Nelligan is a chaperone. I've gone with her before. She volunteered this year. The cost is about between six hundred and eighty-five and seven hundred and fifty this year, depending on the participation. I do have eighteen students that plan to go this year. This is my fourteenth year taking CMS students to Quebec City, and we have very strong interest from students and parents for this year's trip. So I thank you for your time tonight, and happy holidays. Enjoy your respect, I'll say. So if you have any questions, I hopefully... And Jen, anything?
Yeah.
It's been a wonderful trip. I've heard nothing but wonderful things about this trip. I just... I'm always concerned that kids that maybe have trouble coming up with that sum of money, is there any... Are there any supports in place?
If students are on the... As far as scholarship, if students are on the reduced lunch, they would get aid. Other than that, I don't know of any... But if they are the reduced lunch, the program, they do have aid, scholarship. Yeah. That's how they do it.
Families can always confidentially talk to our guidance office for support if needed.
Is that an increase in the cost?
It is an increase. I have a smaller group of students this year. I have between twenty and sometimes up to fifty students, depending on the population. This year, it's a little bit smaller group, so...
So the cost goes up three? Okay.
Ms. Hinch, could you talk briefly about supervision, how many chaperones there are, especially regards to the...
Yes, okay. So we do... It's... The ratio is ten to one for the tour company. So we have the eighteen students. We have two chaperones, myself and Kate Nelligan, who's our guidance counselor and knows all the students. The tour company has a tour guide who stays with us for the whole weekend, including, we actually have to put... They stay at the hotel. So they do stay with us the whole weekend, so in case of emergency, I have a Canadian person with me, you know, at all times. We do have a... They do supply a security guard at the hotel. The boys, we have the boys in one way... We're usually... We're on the same floor. We're small groups, we're on the same floor. So we have the boys on one side, girls in the other, and the chaperones in between. And we do have a security guard at night, between twelve and six in the morning.
On the floor?
Yes, yeah. So we do take the doors. We tell the kids we take the doors. I mean, we do take the doors, kids. We take the doors, so... No, it's just very secure. I mean, they're middle school students.
Of course.
So, yeah.
Oh, that's awesome. Great, great. Yeah, I was wondering about the gender segregation.
Yes, absolutely.
Awesome.
I have two twins that we've got to go. And I am so nervous, and this will be the longest time that they're away from us.
Very good.
This is just the proceed for the college.
I know, I just... They're like, "Yeah, you gonna vote for this?" I'm like, "I don't know." So it's... Thank you for bringing that up, because that was one of my main concerns. And not only that, but the safety, and I'm sure it's just a concern as a parent that they're in good hands. I can't tell you how excited they are to go. And they're so excited. French is a big part of our lives now, thanks to you and my son Jackson, too.
Yes, pleasure.
It's...
It's a pleasure to have the kids in class. And I mean, I'm just so proud of the trip, because it is very safe. They are middle school students. We do... We're together all the time. We have the bus... You know, that's probably the part of the cost of the trip, because we are on that bus. The bus takes us to all the locations. We stay together. If we do split up at one point to do two different tours, we have, you know, both chaperones each tour. As far as, you know, like the medications or anything, we carry passports. We carry medications. You know, this... Fourteen years I've done it, so I have my hat on.
Yeah, no, that's even lost one, yeah. That's...
I have to say, I think I, you know, I think I have all that tied down, yeah.
And the bus drive is too... How long's the ride?
It's about... It's about an eight-hour ride.
Eight-hour ride?
Yeah.
Is there some stops along the way?
Oh, yeah. We stop for bathroom stop. We stop for lunch. We stop in Huxette, pretty much once we're on the road. We stop, and then we stop in Vermont before we cross the border, and we stop for lunch then. We arrive around two in the afternoon. And then we do activities, and then we have, yeah, then we go off to evening and coming back. Again, we stop for dinner, and we stop for bathroom...
And now, the children, are they allowed, like, when food time? Do you guys go to restaurants? Because my kids are vegetarians as well, so it's kind of...
So we have... We have to give the diet... We have, for my contact person, if the Jump Street Tours, they have to know what... Any kind of allergies or any kind of restricted diets. So I've had many different diets that they typically have no... Don't have problem with the restaurants that they know. There used to be groups coming with dietary restrictions, so...
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for doing this.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, mon plaisir.
Any other questions? No? So could I have a motion to approve the middle school French three-day trip to Quebec City, Canada, May first, second, and third in 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Aye, Paul Kearney.
Aye, Ashley Caleri.
Aye, Ellen Marr. Aye, Jen Madden.
Aye, Craig Mclewen.
Excellent. Thanks so much.
Nice to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So next, before we... Just to go off the agenda for just a moment. Recently, we received a wonderful award here in Cohasset. You can see it on the banner there. We're on the AP District Honor Roll, which is the tenth annual honor roll. So because we have Principal Scott and Assistant Principal Noise here, I wanted to present a certificate to them, which I put in a very expensive frame. And I wanted to read the press release, a part of the press release, so you had an idea of what this entails here. Cohasset Public Schools is one of two hundred and fifty school districts in the United States and Canada, and one of only twelve schools in Massachusetts, being honored by the College Board with placement on the tenth annual AP District Honor Roll. To be included on the tenth annual honor roll, Cohasset Public Schools had to, since 2017, increase the number of students participating in AP while also increasing or maintaining the percentage of students earning AP exam scores of three or higher. Reaching these goals shows that the district is successfully identifying motivated, academically-prepared students who are ready for AP. And for the inclusion on the tenth annual AP District Honor Roll, they also had to meet Cohasset Matt the following criteria: to increase participation access to AP by at least eleven percent in a small district; to increase and maintain the percentage of minority students scoring three or higher on AP exams; and to improve or maintain performance levels, which have been very, very high for some time now. So it's a nice honor, and we're in very exclusive company with the group that we're being honored with. So here it is, this fabulous framed certificate. But the thought is a powerful one, because it represents a lot of great teaching, some amazing students, and some very supportive parents. So thank you to all those groups. Of course. Okay.
Can I... I just want to comment.
Of course, of course.
We got your... The email on it, and several of us commented, and it is incredible, and it's especially incredible, in my opinion, because we have what you could call open enrollment in AP, whereas we encourage children to challenge themselves and take AP classes, whereas in other districts, there's prerequisites and criteria to be met, whether you're in an honors or accelerated with a B or a B-plus, then you can be recommended by the department head to move on. We have a very open policy, where we really encourage kids to push themselves and challenge themselves. So it's remarkable, in my opinion, to have these kind of results with that policy. So congratulations to you, your students, and your staff.
Yeah. The teachers do an excellent job. The kids really challenge themselves and rise to the standard, so it's great. I'm very proud of them.
What are you going to do next year, right?
Going forward, right?
I'd act a follow, just continue to get on the honor roll. Wonderful. So now we have a few excellent presentations, and I'm going to turn over to Dr. Collins for the first acknowledgement.
Right.
With Principal Scott.
Yep, so we have the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. That's something we do every year. And just a quick overview, that the scholarships have provided tuition credit for up to eight semesters of undergraduate education at Massachusetts College or University. And it covers tuition-only, not fees for room and board. But nonetheless, it's a wonderful thing that kids have an opportunity to do. So the class of 2019, 2020 followed a one criteria. It doesn't change over. There'll be a little bit different criteria, but just so you know, it's related to their MTS scores. And they have to earn a score of two hundred and sixty or higher on one of the tests. And then on the other two tests, they have to earn a score of two forty-four or higher. So it's a pretty big accomplishment, and it's a nice thing for students to have that option. It's just a... You know, it's a nice recognition that they've done really well and exceeded, and that the state, you know, offers this opportunity. So we have many students that are on this. So Principal Scott was going to read all those names, so we can get them live on TV and recognize all of them.
So we have thirty-three students, so I'd like to make a few of the list. Ian Appleby, Emily Appleton, Virginia Coffey, Brooke Conroy, Jake Cosentino, Ian Taradota, Harley Ford, John Ford Centele, Sam Franklin, Tucker Fulton, Molly Greer, Catherine Hassan, Taylor Herndon, Paige Hewitt, Maggie Hopman, Sam Capalinos, Connor Cnealy, Joe Clear, Ryan Leahy, Connor McGovern, Jessica Moy, Will Norton, Yuki Kenizawa, Xavier Blastrey, Alex Rowe, Will Seabee, Ben Smith, Jake Sullivan, Noah Sullivan, Tyler Tome, Anna Thomas, Gray Thomas, and Adam Womack. Around thirty-three.
That's great.
Congratulations.
Yeah, a round of applause.
And thank you to Principal Scott and Assistant Principal Noise for being here tonight. I told them I'd let them go as well. Bless you have more.
Yeah, before you do, I had sent out the note on the respectable school district. I'd like that... No, nothing to apologize for. So I don't know if everyone needs another copy or not. This came through MASC, and it's an initiative by Lieutenant Governor Catherine Polito to... She's on the Governor's Council to address sexual assault and domestic violence in schools. And so they're looking for school districts and school committees to have a resolution indicating that they are a respectable school district and that it's all about highlighting healthy relationships for our students and our young adults from Massachusetts U-age twelve to eighteen. And coming off the newsletter where Torrance Sweeney's class had One Love come in and make a presentation, which is all of... That's from Ashley, the lacrosse, the girl in Virginia?
Yes.
Yes, Virginia... Yeah. This foundation was created to talk about healthy relationships. So I'd like to know if the committee would like to make a resolution that we are a respectful school district. So I don't know if people need time to think about this or talk about it.
I don't need time.
I don't need time either.
That's great. Very successful presentation, and certainly that ties in with everything we stand for in our mission.
Yeah. Do you, Principal Scott, Assistant Principal Noise, do you have any comments or concerns about this, or...
Nope. We do that, we're in shape.
Okay.
Fundamental rule of the school, we need to treat each other with respect.
With respect. Okay. So can I have a motion, then, to resolve that the Cohasset Public School District is in support of Respectfully the Commonwealth Massachusetts Public Awareness and Prevention Campaign Regarding Healthy Relationships?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Okay, so I'll I'll fill this in and send it off to the um.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks for being here. Okay, so shall I move forward?
Yes, please, thank you.
Um so uh next we have our food service. Marilyn Harren and Director of Operations and Finance. Michael McMillan, I want to apologize in public to to Marilyn, she was here a um
Oh, a couple of times.
A few presentation.
Yeah, I took I took a little nap in the other room.
A few school committees ago, um was ready to present and um was stayed for a very long time, um where we had a uh a very important.
She was a little obstructed seat too, or mommy too, it's like being in the garden, doing dirt.
But anyway, now that I'm not dropping, welcome. This is our remote, if you want, let me just get this. Okay, so if you just press that button, it will advance it.
All right. All right, I'm a, you know, I'll screw it up. All right, you really can't see it, but.
It's coming.
Oh, it's coming in.
Oh, all right, it's gonna wa.
Take some time, just like everyone else. There you go.
All right, so I'm Marilyn Harren, everyone, I'm the Director of Food Services. I've been here in Cohasset for nine years now, this is my ninth year. So I'm just here to talk about our program, um boasted, it's something that we don't get really a lot of opportunity to do here. Um we, you know, with the work forces uh of the um kitchen, we, you know, perform it every day, but we really don't get a lot of uh screen time. So um basically, our mission is nutrition and um, you know, our focus is our nutrition, taste, participation and cost. Uh we have to balance that every day in our program. Um it's, you know, it's just, it's, I think everybody knows, you know, it's it's a challenge to keep the price low, keep the selections uh interesting, what the kids want, and um and 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 make sure the nutrition is where it needs to be. And um make sure, yeah, make sure the kids wanna wanna come in and buy, so that's our that's our mission as a whole. We do have um legal duties and standards which are set by the USDA. Um a lot of people don't know everything we have to go through to plan these meals. We have um, you know, many laws, but our main laws, our main um regulations are the food. And we have to count calories, fat, sodium, um sugar, uh we, everything has to be whole grain. We have to have different categories of fruits and vegetables on the menu each week, we have to have our different colors. Everything is accounted for, everything is um, you know, has value as far as whether it's an ounce, whether it's a cup. So I have a um a menu planning uh program that helps me do all of this. You know, all the ingredients get put in by hand, by what food we have, and then as you build your menus, this program is gonna show you overall calories, protein, sugar, fat, everything for each piece, and then as a meal as a whole, and then by the week, and then by the month. So we need to know all of those um pieces to make our menu. We also have to meet minimum hours of professional development for the staff, that's another law by the USDA. We take this time to train the staff on things that we um feel they need. Uh every year, we try to do things such as allergy allergy awareness training, everyone sanitation certified. Um we do CPR every two years, we do EpiPen training every year. Um she, they've added in in the CPR um Narcan training, um choke sabers we're trained on. And then we just pick other things as we feel the staff needs, such as knife skills training, um you know, um slips and trips training, you know, whatever whatever we feel is pertinent uh for the training for that year, we kind of gauge it year by year as what we need. Sometimes it's safety training for the building, which is usually run by the district, they participate in that. So it's just a um a whole um it um, you know, array of professional development that just benefits us, it benefits the district. And then it it um it fills the law requirement to our professional development. We also have to follow strict procurement laws with our purchasing of food and equipment, which um we're also trained on. Michael's the uh licensed MCPPO right now, and I'm in the process of being licensed for that, so.
I'm sorry, what is?
Massachusetts. Certificate of Procurement Officer, yeah, sorry.
It's fine, it's alright.
It's a lot of letters, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's alright, it's fine.
This is a newer law that um municipals have been it been um put under. So um every, it's just, it's, you know, there's there's ways to buy a product, it has to be fair, it has to be an open and fair um purchase. So it there's there's levels of if the product is under this much, if it's under this much, if it's under that much, there's all these tiers. So um it's quite a, it's quite a feat. Uh we do belong to a um collaborative buying group for all of our food and paper. Uh we have about sixty schools in that group with a tech, and that's the Education Collaborative. So we um pay into that group each year and then they actually um they have a chief procurement officer that handles all of the bids. And then we get the benefit of the more schools you have, the more people you have, the better pricing you get, and the more um vendors that you're gonna get to participate in your bid. So it works out for us that we get better pricing and then we're able to collaborate with a lot of other school districts in the state. So it's a nice program that we've been in since I've been here.
Sorry, say that again, paper and what?
Uh paper and food, paper, food produce is what we are on.
Thank you.
DESI requires us to have audits. Uh we're on a three-year cycle, they have currently three audits that we have to um go through, a general administrative audit that pretty much covers our entire program as a whole, um everything from the food and nutrition to the financial management, to free and reduced um applications, to procurement, so it covers a lot. Um our health and wellness policy is a part of that. The procurement audit is new since they've uh implemented the procurement laws. I, we haven't had a procurement audit yet, but we're due for one probably next year. The comprehensive financial audit um is just a deep dive into our financials. We've had one of those um since I've been here in the past nine years and they come in and they just, you know, really um focus on your financials to make sure everything looks the way it should. Because we're federally funded, um we we have to follow all federal guidelines of the um federal government and state, so. I've had five audits since I've been here between these three um categories. So all have gone well, um you know, they send you a report afterwards, we fix anything that they recommend we fix, and next time they'll check and make sure that everything's working the way that it should be. Our participation data at the schools, um so we have the three schools, Joseph Osgood runs about thirty-seven percent, Deer Hill's about thirty-seven percent, and then the Middle High runs about twenty-nine percent. The lunch times at the school, I think this matters as far as participation, um the two elementaries get twenty minutes each. And so that's twenty minutes from the minute they have to leave their classroom, to make it down to the lunchroom, to wait in line, get the meal, pay for the meal, and then sit. So sometimes some of those kids are fifteen minutes in before they sit. So the lunch line can be a deterrent. Um the Middle High School gets twenty-five minutes. As far as lunch periods, Joseph Osgood and Deer Hill, each grade gets their own lunch. At the Middle High School, uh in the middle school, it's two lunches, the high school, all four grades coming together, so it's just one lunch. So that's also can be a deterrent as far as the crowds. Financial information as far as the lunch prices, right now, currently, elementary school, we're at two seventy-five for both buildings and three dollars uh for the Middle High. We raised these prices, I believe it was three years ago, so we haven't had a price increase. This will be our third school year with these prices. And these prices include the entree, they get to pick the fruit, the vegetable, the milk or juice or water, they don't want the milk. We do not refuse any student a lunch, that is in our written uh policy, that was approved by school committee last year. So everyone gets a lunch regardless of whether they can pay or not. We do send home letters via email through our online School Buck system. If anybody gets over a certain amount, uh which we typically don't have any big problems in this district, like some other districts, but we will send a personal email or make a phone call um just to see if we can help out in any way, make a payment plan, um or, you know, uh just help, you know, see if we can alleviate the problem of the uh the the debt. At the end of the year, the general fund is required to pay us back for any unpaid meal charges. And that's that's the federal law, by law, the counts have to be wiped. Typically, at the end of the year, we don't have more than a hundred and fifty dollars district-wide. So we're very low compared to other districts. We do rely on some of our commodities, which is our government food that comes as part of our federal program. So we get an allotment of government commodities um each year based on our participation. And that's everything from our fresh um produce, which comes from, we have a local purveyor. This year, it's um Costa, Costa fruit and vegetable. Um so they try to give us, they, everything has to be bought in America, every piece of food we have has to be grown and purchased and produced in the USA. We are not allowed by law to give any foods from outside of the USA. So everything's grown and produced in the United States. And I think it's important to know that we we are a self-funded program, we rely solely on our own profits each year. We don't get um an allotment from the town, we don't, we're self-funded, you know, we don't get a budget. So if we don't make the money, we don't have money to put back into our program. So, you know, it's important to us to run this program well and make sure that um it turns a little bit of a profit. We are a nonprofit by law, so all the profits that we make, we put back into our program. And as far as, um this is the revenue for the past two fiscal years. Um as you can see in FY eighteen and nineteen, um it's been in the black since I've been here in two thousand and eleven. So we've been able to make a net profit and put that back into the um into the programs. And we've bought um, you know, everything from new equipment to, you know, brought in uh trainers to train, everything from, you know, chefs to, you know, safety trainers and um just trying to upgrade the kitchens. We have a brand new steamer upstairs, we have um new freezers in all three buildings, there's a new stove and two ovens being delivered this coming Monday to the Deer Hill School to upgrade their um systems. And these are just aging pieces of equipment, uh that have been there over twenty years and it's time to upgrade them. So we're we're fortunate to be able to do that, other schools are, you know, piecing together their equipment with tinfoil to to keep them going because they have no money in their budget, so we've been able to, very fortunate to put money back into the program. Um our structure of staffing, we have a pretty small um staff here of fabulous, hard-working workers that have been here as long as thirty years. Uh that's our most senior worker, she's up here in the high school, this is her thirtieth year. So there's five in the Middle High, three at Deer Hill and two at Osgood. Uh they're all contracted in to work twenty-two point five hours a week, so they're all part-time. And so the Middle High School is our biggest kitchen, it's our full-service uh kitchen, it's got a lot of equipment. I think when they redid these buildings back in like the nineties, their intention was to make the elementary schools satellites. So we, even when I came here, Osgood didn't have a working stove and oven, and then one, they both got installed in two thousand and eleven. There was a home oven at Osgood, someone donated it. So the cooking was being done in the central kitchen at the Middle High School and we've tried to um make these these small kitchens, small full-service kitchens, so that's that's been our goal since I've gotten here. So, you know, we've added ovens, we've added more refrigerators, we're more ovens, we've added uh food warmers, mixers, uh blenders. So we've really tried to make these kitchens uh serviceable. But this kitchen up here um is the biggest and has the most equipment by far. And some of our highlights um for our food, so we have some great creative cooks, they love to cook, they love to try new recipes. You know, we do a good amount of scratch cooking, so we do make our own homemade hummus, smoothies, guacamole. Uh these are some of the kids' favorites, the Mediterranean salad, the burrito bowls. Um we worked, we work with Reds Best, which is a a local fish company out of Boston. So they get all their fish off our local boats, so the boats come as close as situated. And they work up to Gloucester, so when we get our fish delivered, it was caught the day before, and they uh prep it at the docks in Boston and bring it right to us. It has a tag on it, we know what boat it came from, we know how the fisherman caught it, whether it was a net, whether it was hook and line. So it's a great program. They had come out and did a presentation for us at the Middle High School when we started the program. And he brought all his fresh raw fish to show the kids, this is what it looks like, before, you know, you're eating it. And then we served it and we make fish chowder and we make baked fish and we make fish tacos. We try to do a few different recipes with the fish. And while everybody's not a fish eater and some of the kids will walk in and be like, oh, I hate that smell. Uh it it's been a big hit. So also our um gardens have been a huge hit. Uh we've had gardens in this school since I've been here, but the Joseph Osgood Garden, then the Deer Hill Garden, which is the newest garden, has produced a lot of uh produce for us. So we've gotten everything from tons of greens, um spinach, kale, romaine. We've had carrots, corn, peppers, tomatoes, cucumbers, tons and tons. The gardens did very well this year, you know, every year it's, you never know which, you know, you're gonna get for our garden, but we did very well this year. And the kids love it because when they walk in, we put the signs up that they grew it and they're so excited. Some of them have harvested it, so they're like, oh, I picked that carrot, so, you know, it's exciting for them. Yeah, you know, it just, it 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 makes them more out to take the the fruit and the veggie because they they know they um they grew it. And, you know, they, and John from Holly Hills works closely with the schools to uh keep the gardens up. Love to get greenhouses, I've talked to um Al, our wood uh wood shop person, to see if we can, you know, maybe start one here and see how it goes, because that way we can have it all year round, that would be awesome. So that's that's been a great thing. Um we do surveys every year with the kids to see where they're at and what they're looking for. Uh our newest surveys were done this past spring and, you know, ta- tastes change, you know, themes change as time goes on, so you want to keep relevant, it's nice to hear what they think. We always get great feedback from the kids uh in all three buildings. We do the surveys a little bit different in each building, Osgood, it's more of like a smiley face, yes and no. And then, you know, up here at the Middle High School, they can give us more detailed uh information of what they're looking for and, you know, what what we have, what we don't have, what works, what doesn't work. So, you know, the survey data is important for us, we like to do it every year um to get to get the uh and and we've tried to do like the online ones, but really what works for us is just going out the calf, you know, and talking to the kids table to table with our little slips, because then, once they see you, you know, and you're bringing samples around or something and you start the conversation, and then they're they're really interested in it versus ignoring an email that they didn't even have time to fill out the uh survey, so that's that's what we tend to do every year, is go out into the calves, talk to the kids and see what they're looking for. Um and our, some of our goals for this year, um we work with the John Stocker Institute, which is a culinary uh institute that works closely with Framingham State University, they do a lot of um nutrition, and they work closely with the School Nutrition Association. Uh they do hands-on culinary workshops, so they come to your school. We actually, I applied for a grant back in the spring, I did res- get, I did get awarded the grant, so um we're gonna do one of these culinary workshops um either in the spring of this year, or it'll be fall of next year, or um whatever schedule we get on with them. They'll come out, you pick a theme, um I think there's three themes, Mediterranean, Asian, Fusion, um the third thing, so you pick a theme and then they'll come out, they work with you for the day, there's like a day of prep and then a day of serve, and they just show uh you the best way to utilize uh the And they just show, uh, you the best way to utilize, uh, the, you know, recipes and how to get the best out of the food. And then they'll walk, talk with the kids afterwards and see what they thought. So, it's a really, um, it's a really great program and, um, I'm looking forward to it. Um, another thing we want, we wanna start off is a monthly food, um, service department newsletter. I feel like we don't put ourselves out there enough. Um, and I know you do a great one, Patrick.
I'm not gonna put that in, I didn't.
Yeah, maybe we, we can just, yeah, that, I think that would.
They'll just keep going down.
Yeah, right, right?
No, that's a great idea.
Yes, because I'm not the best technological person and, yeah. And yours looks awesome, so I'm thinking, I think we should just add on even once a month. Just give a little update. Here's what's happening. Here's what we serve. This is something we try new. And then people know. So, you know, because we're doing all of these things all the time, but maybe people don't even know about them. One of our goals is to expand our breakfast program. So, right now, we don't serve breakfast at either elementary school. Um, since I've been here, we never have. I don't know the history before that. We have an after-the-break breakfast right now at the middle high school. Um, the push with the federal government is to make breakfast mandatory and, and it's a big push. I mean, studies have shown that, you know, a well-balanced breakfast after the bell starts, now you've got the kids captured. And, you know, if you serve it before school gets here, you know, the bus ran late, they're running late. So, they don't always get a chance to grab it before school's done. So, the after-the-bell breakfast is the trend. And I think it's, um, you know, hugely beneficial to students and to increase, um, you know, participation in the breakfast program and to, um, benefit the students in the classroom as far as, um, you know, with the studies have shown that they pay attention more in class with a well-balanced breakfast. And then behavior is better with a well-balanced breakfast. So, you know, I would love to see, um, us move forward with breakfast programs if we could in all three buildings. Doesn't have to be fancy, you know. We can do, you know, continental, grab-and-go quick. There's a lot of models out there. There's breakfast in the classroom. There's breakfast on mold carts. Um, so we have, we have a lot of options to, to think about with, with these models. And I would love to see it, um, happen. And we, I'm also looking to update our service areas at the schools. So, I have a designer that's gonna come out and they're just gonna look at the space and then they're gonna, um, try and mock up. All our, all our buildings now are, you know, edging towards twenty years or more. So, you know, just to upgrade the, the serving areas and make them more appealing, more user-friendly, you know. Um, put a salad bar at the high school. Right now, we have the grab-and-go salads. But I'd love to have a salad bar where the kids can kinda, yeah, make their own. So. And that, again, those are the trends and we're just trying to keep up with them. An update in the menus. Again, we do the surveys every year. We try to, um, update, you know, the surveys at least once a year just to keep up with the kids and their trends. My staff's great though. They have great relationships with their kids. They talk to them every day. They know their names. You know, every time we have a new something new on the menu, the next day, they're asking them, what'd you think? What'd you like? What, what didn't you like? So, they really are, uh, great communicators with the kids and they're, they're my front line of, of action. You know, utilizing the school gardens, like I said, I'd love to, um, get a, uh, a, um,
Greenhouse.
greenhouse built. That would be amazing. Uh, continue to use our fish from our local boats and our harvest of the month from our local, um, vendors. Um, we, uh, we, we got rid of styrofoam like five years ago. So, we do have compostable trays right now. We don't have any dishwashers in the district. They weren't built with dishwashers, so everything has to be disposable. So, the trays are compostable. Uh, but right now, they're not being composted in a compost pile. They're being disposed of and they are composting. But there's just so many of them. There's not a spot for, you know. We have compost piles for our food scraps up here, but they could never take the trays that we have. It's just not possible. So, you know, while they are, you know, kind of friendly to the earth, yeah, we could do more with them. And then our other goal was track, tracking, uh, down participation, which we started this year.
That's good.
That's everything.
That's great.
Great. Um, questions from the committee?
Um, I have a few.
Okay, go ahead, Craig.
Um, thank you so much for your comprehensive presentation. You clearly have such a passion for this. We'd like to have you. Um, I just had, I have some questions. I'm about, first about the, um, the, looking at the revenue. Because I actually didn't know it was a self-funded program.
Yes.
Um, and so that's pretty interesting. Hey, I'm, I'm, I'm new to this.
Yes.
And, uh, and so I was just looking, and so as you were talking, I was like trying to calculate, like, that would seem crazy to me. Um, given the participation data that you supplied. So, uh, so it looks like, you know, um, the revenue in eighteen anyway was like, you know, a little over half a million dollars. But then, looking at the participation data, um, I, 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 I don't understand how we're coming up. So, like, Osgood, Deer Hill, and then Middle High School. Um, so there's, you know, I, usually this district, there's like about a hundred kids a class. I mean, I think it's like a basic average that I usually use to calculate. So, we're talking about, you know, so K through twelve, like thirteen hundred kids, I guess, like about.
Fifteen hundred.
It's about fifteen.
It's about fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen, seventeen.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, so, a hundred is, is on the lower end.
Yeah.
Um, I'd say generally, that's a pretty fair estimator.
Okay, so, but, but where, fifteen?
Hundred, fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
About one fifteen.
Okay.
An average.
Okay.
Trending more towards a hundred.
Okay.
Unless you count the, oh, yes.
And, and Barbara, please speak up because you know. Um, no, don't, no. I mean, I, I'm just trying to figure this out. So, okay, so it's thirty-seven, thirty-seven, and twenty-nine. Um, so just trying to use like round figures, like I, you know, you know, say about like thirty-three percent or thirty-four percent is like an average. Um, so, we're talking about, and just using that fifteen hundred figure, I guess, like, so we're talking about, what is that? That's, uh, that's four hundred fifty?
Fifteen. About five hundred kids.
Yeah, it's about five hundred.
About five hundred, about five hundred, okay.
Yeah.
About five hundred lunches purchased on a daily basis?
Yeah.
Okay, so, sorry, just excuse me, because I, I was, I had miscalculated when I did. So, four fifty. Um, I'm just using like two eighty, like two eighty-seven is like the median or the, the, the average. So, it's like, okay, so twelve ninety-one a day. Uh, generated revenue from sales.
We do a lot more than just lunches. We do a lot of à la carte sales, a ton of à la carte sales.
Okay, talk to me about that. What is the, what is the à la carte? What is the?
À la carte is anything that is not your school lunch. So, your bottled waters.
Okay, oh, all right, all right, okay, okay.
Um, and then, yeah, we do a lot of catering throughout the district as well. So, that's.
All, all of our professional development events, we've had catering, they've been pretty much.
Oh.
Anything we do, she offered.
That's a good revenue maker for us.
They make the best quiche I've ever eaten in my life.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
Okay, so that's, okay, so that would have, because I was looking at it, it was like, you know, we're talking about like, like maybe two hundred thousand dollars from like sales of like, of lunches. So, there's all these other things that are.
And part of our revenue is also our federal and state, uh, refunds for our, our, um, reimbursements.
Okay.
So, we get money from that.
Okay, all right, okay, cool. Thanks. Yeah, that's just why I was confused. Because I was thinking just like, and I, I figured, yeah, of course you sell some milks and waters right there, but I was like, like, how are we making up for that? Yeah, so, okay, so the catering, that explains. Okay, so, and then the, the other issue I had, there was not issue, but question, is on the highlights section where you're talking about like all these awesome things, is like homemade hummus and smoothies and, and the local fish. Is this, are these like, because I never see that on the menu. And like just looking at the first semester, like, uh, for lack of a better phrase, like, so, so I'm talking like September, October, November, December, like the menu.
Yes.
And I look at this thing all the time because I have first graders. She's ultra picky, so I have to make sure that on day, there's something that you eat. Um, I, I only saw fish once in that entire stretch. So, is it like?
Sometimes we will do it as like a special.
Okay.
Yeah, especially things like the fish, like, because they.
You wouldn't know.
Yeah, because they, it's not something everyone's gonna eat.
Right, okay.
So, that's another piece we wanna do. Like, we wanna build the online, you know, so that they know, you know. Well, like, for instance, up at this school, we, we post the main entree, but there's like six or eight other entrees every day to choose from.
They're like specials?
And, and there's different, yeah, there's different sections. So, you have your daily bar.
You never know what it is. It's just like, it's like you walk in a restaurant and it says, here are special sets.
In the kitchen, you know, for the kids to see. So, they'll know, you know, they know in the day, so.
Is that only in the middle high, for the older kids or is it often the older adults too?
No, we have it in all three buildings.
Special, like, so special?
It's, it's more limited because we try to keep it more simple in the elementary schools.
They're pickier too, I mean, you, you, you don't like.
Yes, and if you give them too many choices, it causes chaos down there.
Right, right.
They can't decide and then the whole twenty minutes is gonna go by and the same kid's gonna be there.
Right.
So, we do try to simplify it down there, but up here, it's, it's a vast area, uh, with many sections that, um, we have, yeah, lots of specials.
Okay, and finally, and I'm a, I, 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 I'm just asking your professional opinion as the food services director. I mean, I didn't know that the lunch period was twenty minutes for, that's, 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 that's crazy. I mean, in a word, and that's, that's, that's really what you said.
And again, the trend is extending it as well because studies are showing, you know, that it's not enough time. And what's happening is the things that we want them to eat the most, the veggies, the fruits, those are the things that make the most, take the most time to eat. You're not gonna wolf down an apple. It's just not gonna happen. So, that apple's going over here. If you give them more time, they're gonna eat the apple.
Okay, so, you, you would like to see more time as a food services.
I would love to see more time.
And I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm just, I know that there's a lot of logistics going bad. We would just dealt with the time issue. That was really, um, fun.
So, whenever anybody does like a plate waste, you know, um, research, that's usually one of the main things, is how much time do they have to consume the food? What did they consume and why? And, and that usually ends up being the answer. You know, I can scoff down the sandwich really quick, but, you know, the apple or the fruit, you know, if it's an orange, I'm gonna have to peel it. It takes time. And we have recess before lunch now, which has helped. Before, it'd be like, I gotta chew the food and get out the door. You know, that's the goal. So, now we have recess before lunch. So, they have worked up their appetite. They're, they're ready to go. Uh, but it's still that twenty minutes. So, again, that's twenty minutes to get them in the door, line them up, get them through the line, choose their food, pay, and sit.
Which is tough for the really little kids.
The last student, on average, it can take twelve to fifteen minutes.
It's unbelievable. So, then, how long is recess? Does anyone know? In like Osgood?
Ten, fifteen?
No, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's fifteen minutes.
Up in this building, they do have, they have the twenty-five minutes. Um, it makes a difference.
Okay.
Up in this building, we just have a line issue. We have a lot of kids coming in at once and, and it's like. Yeah, yeah. And everyone's trying to get in and out the same door and it's like, if you're a shy person, you are not going in that line.
Um, and then my last question I had was, um, sorry for all this, the questions. This is like, uh, very interesting to me, um, and I feel like it's important. Um, but it says, you like had an answer on this, on the DESI page.
Yes.
It said, um, that we have, we must accept the lowest-priced bid offered by all the vendors.
Correct.
Can you, can you just, um, like, expand on that a little bit? So, I, like, or so maybe, so this is maybe from Mr. McMoone. So, wha, uh, so that strikes me as like, um, like, I don't know, raises a red flag. So, we have to go with like the, the lowest price?
The lowest responsible and responsive bidder. That's how it's written.
But why are they low? Like, sometimes like you're sacrificing quality as well.
Can I chime in on that? Can I please chime in on that? Um, the milk being served right now, if, if this is true, has growth hormones in it, right? Correct? That cows are injected with growth hormones?
I didn't look.
Yeah, you, well, in, the reason why I know that, it's moo milk. And to Craig's point, because we have to get the lowest milk, that means that this, this giving the cows artificial hormones, which basically makes the cows grow to produce more milk, which is basically inhumane. And it's also, there's studies that show that there's, that there might be a, uh, a problem with, uh, middle school girls getting to puberty quicker. There's all these studies of, you're aware of this, correct? So, this puts a big burden on, because you can't get organic milk because it's not in the budget, because it's not the lowest price. However, like, what are the, some of the things that we could do? Because honestly, me knowing that, knowing they, that we're serving milk, just, just the milk alone, i- it's, it's troubling to me, to be honest with you.
Is that a, is that a product of?
It's a growth hormone.
So, can, can Michael answer the, the question, maybe?
On the procurement issue, so there is, there is law that under certain, certain types of procurement, you have to go with the lowest bidder. And so that puts the onus, bonus on us to request bids that we will be content with whoever is able to meet that requirement. So, for example, you could say, we want organic milk. And then you take the lowest bidder on organic milk. Or, so you have to make sure your description of what you want includes the quality that you want. So, you don't end up going for it. Because if you just go, yeah, we want milk, then the bid, lowest bidder is probably gonna give you a product you don't want.
Right.
So, you ask for milk with a certain level of quality or, you know, well, it has to be in America, so, you know, whatever, not milk, you know.
Right.
And, and so, that just puts a bonus on us to make sure descriptions are sufficiently.
And, and so we do that?
Yeah, probably work with, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the milk we serve is gorillic. It's a, you know.
I mean, I'm, aside from the, I'm, I'm ju, I, I'll let, I'll, I'll, the, the, um, the, the milk, I'm just wondering. So, okay, so the quality issues are alleviated by the fact that you're specifying the products you want.
Right, so you have to write your specs in a way that you're gonna get the product.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's not, I mean, that's what we're trying to do. I mean, that is always, it is, that is a problem we face with procurement in all walks of the work.
Right.
So, you, uh, you would procure for, you know, construction work on the building. You have to order those bitters. So, you're trying to make sure your description is detailed enough that whoever bids for it successfully will be good. But it's really tricky because, you know, the, the mix of the concrete that they suggest, if you're not, you know, you're gonna make it go with a more low-quality mix and that can impact the quality, yeah.
That's why we're lucky. We have.
And the facility.
And, yes, okay, all right. Well, that was it. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Um, thanks a lot.
Okay, Jen, any questions?
Um, I, thank you so much. And I think school lunch is such an important part of the day for children. It's a, a place where I hope children can relax. And I know that, um, kids really form relationships with the people that serve lunch.
Yes.
And they're often sort of a bright spot in their day. I see it every day with children. And, um, thank you. It sounds like you're running a wonderful program. I'm just curious about the dishwashers. Is, I, I've always wondered, why did we eliminate dishwashers? Is there any move to put them back?
So, back in the nineties, there was a push for everyone to use paper because water prices were high. And that was a trend. So, when buildings got redone at that time and before environmental, you know, burdens were that, the biggest issue, that was the trend. So, let's get rid of the dishwashers, save all that water and use disposing. And that's what happened.
So, is there any move to go back to dishwashers or, I mean, I suppose it'd imagine.
They don't have space. The way they built the buildings, there's no space for any.
To assess space.
You'd have to redo the whole thing. I guess, the kitchen used to be on this side of the building before the redo. So, it's, it's not even in the same spot.
Right.
I know, it's kind of crazy.
So, do you see any solutions to making the line move a little quicker to allow kids more time to eat? Is do you, can you think of a solution for that or?
It's a quick fact check. Twenty-five minute recess.
I mean, you know, we, we, they would all, and we could always discuss making the lunches longer. That would be a solution.
It's forty, yeah, it's forty-five minutes, so it's twenty-five minutes for a recess.
But, but on, on, you don't see a way of like doing anything on your end or?
It's difficult. Um, they come in the elementary schools. They do, at least in Osgood, they come down by class. I think they do by, in Deer Hill as well. Um.
And also, the, the way they, I mean, you're correct, we're wrong, but just having walked the schools and seen lunch happening and the way the kitchens are, they're set up doesn't, you know, so it's in Osgood, they've gotta go into the kitchen and it's quite a small area. They've gotta get meal and pay and get out. So, it's kind of, it doesn't blend itself to.
It's the in, it's the in-and-outs, you know.
They're not constructed in a way that makes it very efficient. But hopefully, there's person we have from an internal loop to how we have them set up.
Because then even up here, you know, it's, it is an open kitchen, which has benefits, but it also has negatives because everybody's coming in and out the same way. So, you get this congestion.
The other, one of the other things that slowed it down just from the survey is that under, correct me if I'm wrong, because we have, under the federal guidelines, we have to offer certain elements in order for a meal to be reimbursed. So, this should have to be offered, the meal, the fruit, uh, the drink. we have to offer certain elements in order for a meal to be reimbursed, so this should have to be offered, the meal, the fruit, uh the drink.
Yeah.
So that actually, they can't just like grab a sandwich and Google it and probably offer those things.
Yeah, right. So they'll ta- you know, we have, the way we have it set up, it's kinda open, they can grab their fruits, you know, the whole sections for where they are, but, I mean, it's it's a process. It's to get pe- kids through the line, it's a process, you know.
Thank you. Um, I have a c- a couple of questions, are, and this is a stupid question, I would assume the portion sizes at the middle high school are vastly different than that at the elementary?
So there's, there's three sets of portion sizes that we go by, this K through five, six through eight, nine through twelve.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
So those are the three menus that are made with portion sizes allotted.
Okay.
So though, yeah, each school has its own.
Okay. Okay, um, and this is totally from a personal perspective, I had, I had boys, I had big boys, I had athletic boys.
Yeah.
And they could never get enough food going through the line.
Yeah.
You know, so they, so they would, you you know, bring money to buy and bring a lunch.
Right.
And do we see that as issues, like, do you see kids trying to, trying to get their food, you know?
So, it happened before two thousand and twelve, before the um, the new regulations took place, there was no um minimums and maximums.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And then in two thousand and twelve, when we did start our new uh regimen, there was minimums and maximums, which eliminated us vastly, um, so.
Okay, so and then, and this also looks to that, it creates points earlier of a Alacart, so I just, I checked the numbers, and Alacarts, like, we could bring in, so, rough figures, we bring in the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in meal sales, plus the reimbursement, and a hundred and forty thousand dollars in Alacart.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So Alacart's hugely problematic, yeah, so it is a lot.
And Alacart does include a second meal.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So it's a big, so that will put, yeah, so people, so that will include, so getting a meal anyway, and then buying an additional kind of food.
So. Yeah. And that's hard, you know, everybody's built the same way, you're gonna have one person that only eats half the plate, and you're gonna have one person that wants two plates, so it's.
Right. Right. Right.
You know, it's ne- you're never gonna.
Right, and and one, one more question along the same lines, also for the the student athletes who practice, practices don't typically start till about quarter of three, is that the rule, Brian?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
That, yeah, so, kids are hungry, you know, they leave their house at at seven or before and and they're hungry, have we thought about maybe having a cafe or something in in that period of from dismissal to?
Yeah, that's something that's something that needs to be suggested as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, is that something your department could accommodate?
I think it could be done, um, yeah, we would just have, you know, just do the logistics of staffing it.
Okay. And staffing it and figuring out what it is, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or maybe to the point, they could do pre-made sandwiches and then do them during lunch and then sell them at the at the.
Yeah, yeah. 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 Yeah, and some schools do have like, you know, like an after-school snack shack where those, you know, like they'll do that, they'll have the pre-mades ready to go, and it only takes, say, one person to man it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then, you know, up they come and they grab their food and off they go, or like some, some schools even will do like a mobile cart, where it's, you know, it's almost like one of those.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And then you have, we have mobile um devices, like an iPad for.
Bar, to, to pack.
Yeah. To pack.
Yeah. Brian, do you see a lot of food deliveries after school, like from?
Food deliveries are constantly, yeah.
Constant.
Constant, but it's like, Mary Lou's, it's a fresh feast, it's, you know, one person I knew that their child needed a hot meal every day, and and it had to be from the center of town, so.
Yeah, like we get meals delivered during, but.
I I don't know that, nobody's starving from that perspective.
They're allowed to bring the food in.
Okay, yeah, but I'm just thinking, if if there were some options after school, maybe that would, because it ties up your office.
Yeah.
Right? Because they have to come through the main door, right, to drop off food.
Right, yeah, I'm I'm just saying, I th- I don't think that our, the volume of food deliveries is necessarily a direct reflection of the after-school stuff, I think if we did have something, it would be well realized.
Okay, all right, I guess that's what I was trying to get to.
And it would be more revenue for us, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So, so some people have like a, like their their meal, their lunch delivered to them, like a, like an individual lunch?
Especially it's a parent, right?
It's a parent, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought I was picturing like, the local, like, yeah, for like one kid, like.
Like a son.
Yeah, I agree. You have that.
Yeah, this, yeah, you put, you put a stop to that.
Put a stop. Yeah. I'll keep those and I'm coming back for them.
Okay.
But.
That's my food.
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay, thanks, thank you. Thank you very much for being here and for your persistence, you had it here, um, sorry to inconvenience you.
No, not at all.
Uh but I selfishly am glad that I'm here for this, because I'm very interested in this, and I wasn't able to make the last, I think it was the last committee meeting. Um, so I will preface what I'm gonna say by being very clear that I recognize that my family is an extreme outlier, like our dietary choices are very different from, I think, a lot of people, so I don't feel like you should serve food that I would, you know, my kids will eat, cause they don't eat dairy, they don't eat a lot of things. However, saying that, um, I have a couple of questions, um, I guess, um, the the first thing, the breakfast thing intrigues me.
Yeah.
Um, again, recognizing I'm an outlier, do we have any data about how many kids come to school without eating breakfast?
No, but that's not a bad que- that's a good question to ask, as we look at our social relationships with our kids, um, I do not believe I've asked that question.
Yeah, cause I would be interested to know that, for me personally, again, recognizing I am not necessarily thinking I'm the norm at all, but like, that to me would be a big sacrifice for me, because my kids get like a nice, well, like, hot breakfast before they come to school, and I, my, specifically my older one, would probably want
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
to follow the crowd and and eat what's offered at school, and that, I feel like for me, would be like a trade-off, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I would just be curious to see what the, at, and I, I don't feel one way or the other about it, I would just be interested to see what the data is
Yeah. Right.
before like really looking at serving them lunch after the bell.
Breakfast, yeah, me breakfast, that's a.
Breakfast, yeah, yeah, sorry, yes, thank you. That's what I mean, yeah, sorry, yes, thank you. Um, so that's one thing, and then I would, I love the greenhouse idea, and that's fabulous, recognizing that there are limitations.
I do, yes. I know.
But I think that'd be so cool.
It would be, yeah.
And I really, really love the fact that the kids are having the opportunity to see, like, I, you know, my kids don't eat fish, but.
Yeah.
I think it's so, like, I think so many kids are growing up having no idea where food comes from, like, what they're eating.
Right. Right.
what it used to look like, and what happens to it to get to their plate.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
And I think it's so important, so I wanna thank you for doing what you're doing to teach the kids that, I, it's like, so important to me, so thank you. Um, and then the only other thing, I'm, I'm sad about all the trays.
Which we, Coach A, who like heads up the re- recycling, you know, we've just been brainstorming, um, off and on, what what to do with them, I mean, people have offered to take them in their cars and bring them to the composting um places, it's just, it, we need a, we need a plan, we need a solid plan.
That's a creative challenge, anybody out there who has some thoughts on that?
Yeah, yeah. So, but I, cause if you have, Coach A's done some um experiments with them, and he says they break down pretty quickly.
So.
It's a project question.
So you, you know, treat them properly and and feed and water them, which is what they need.
Yeah.
They're breaking down, um, you know, he said with it, after a month, they're looking pretty, pretty decomposed, which is great.
I guess my question is whether without dishwashers, there's a solution that's reusable, like, not even.
No, not sanitary wise.
All right, well, I'll sit with that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, I, first of all, it's a challenge to feed so many children, I guess, so the, um, first thing, uh, again, that's, that is definitely a challenge, it's just, it it must be so hard to do, and
Yeah.
I had the pleasure of taking a walk and seeing through, uh, and meeting the staff, and they're very, very friendly, and uh.
Yes. Yeah, they're great.
I I would like to see, like, it, so the numbers are, only thirty percent of the children are actually eating food, uh being served, so we have a seventy percent market that's that's not eating the school food, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, that said, uh, with with some of the, and my children are, again, we're in the same type of outlier outliers, but um, we um, I would love, I mean, my son had a, I I challenged him the other day to go out and have a salad, and he enjoyed it, um, and and one, uh, I was uh fortunate to ha- enjoy some of the hummus that you had pu- pu- uh seen, and
Great, that's awesome. Yes.
One of the things that we s- we saw as as a team was, is the presentation isn't really that well, uh, because of the, basically, the way of the facilities is.
Yes.
Because if you go into Osgood, there's no like tomatoes telling kids on how important the food is, there's, it's it's.
Yeah. It's like, it it's more that old school.
Yeah.
In and out, you know, where.
Yeah, they're not getting an education like.
This building, it's, it's, it's more, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And while all of them, I think, could use a facelift, yeah, which is our, our goal, is to give them all a facelift.
Right. Cause the more and more kids know about the vegetables and where they came from, and 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 I I'd love to see Holly uh Farms here as well, and.
Yes. And he's great, yeah.
Yeah, and John, he's done so much, and 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 I saw the lettuce being produced, and and knowing kids where, if they participate in it, and actually, when we were there, I think, uh, Dr. Sal, I don't know, the the uh,
Yeah. Yes.
Alex Sullivan had a carrot from what she grew, and she proudly showed it to us, and, you know, I have a garden, and I, you know, I'd like to show my children where the actual food comes from.
Yeah. And they're great. And I think they're more apt to eat it, if they grew it, you know, cause it's their product.
Yeah. Absolutely. They see it, yeah, so that said, I mean, um, one of the things is, I I guess in the wellness plans, we're not supposed to make a profit, I guess.
Yeah. We're a nonprofit, so any profit we make, we put it back into the uh program.
We're a non, we're, but we're showing profit. So the forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand from last year, where does that go exactly, in the bank account, or does it go?
Yes.
So we could increase, we could buy organic milk and take a less of a profit, correct?
Uh, so you're, there's a maximum you're allowed to carry in your, uh, as a balance, for just like three months' worth of bread, do you think, so?
Yeah. Three months, yeah.
Uh, so we never go over that, I mean, you want to, we wanna maintain a healthy program, so we don't wanna run too close to what we can't lose, but all those things could be.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Right, but it's, but if you were to say, make me a customer now, because it's honestly growth hormones, I would never give that to my children, and I'm re- really sad that we do serve that in the district, I'd like you to look into that.
So, have you just, have you just seen the, first of all, two things, all milk has growth hormones in it? That's why, yeah, there's a naturally, naturally recorded, recorded.
Uh. These are actually growth hormones that are in the set.
Yeah, that, but I, but from what I understand, that is not done by the the.
When, okay, when's the last time a dietitian, an actual dietitian, written a program for us?
Uh, Gerling.
We have a dietitian on staff.
And who is that?
Allison Miller.
And she's already, she's, looked, okay.
She's an R D, and an L V.
Yeah, so, the 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 other thing that uh, that I was trying to get to is is the fact that if we get more, so the, I I couldn't believe the revenues, to be honest with you, six hundred thousand dollars, that's incredibly a lot of money. So that said, that's mostly uh cost of uh services and payroll and, so to add twenty percent more, if you could get the the participation rate up twenty percent,
Yeah.
you're t- you're talking a lot of money here, because it it would, it would raise, uh, you could make it generate another.
Because most of our, you know, we're very low free and reduced, we're at five percent.
Right.
So, most of our revenue is coming from our paid students.
Right, so if we were, and and my bottom line is, is by you uh doing these, hopefully, and and I'm I'm happy to see that, I think with these changes, uh, that you will be able to track it,
Yeah.
and 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 breakfast, again, that is the most important meal of the day, and and thank you for bringing that up, you know, children do need breakfast.
Yeah. I agree, I agree. Yeah. Yeah.
And I'm a big advocate of better food, better grades, so I'd like to see, honestly, is more organic foods being off, uh offered with less pesticides, more uh organic milk.
And I think that's the trend, don't you, that they're trying, you know, they're trying to make clean labels, they're tr- you know?
Yeah. Yeah, and and.
The companies have recognized that this is what we want.
Right.
We don't want dyes, we don't want chemicals.
Right.
So, you know, the clean label movement, you know, again, it's another trend, but it's it's overdue and it's a good trend.
Right. Yeah, and and.
So the companies, all the companies are working towards that trend.
And that's definitely something that we can try, try to increase the percentage of foods that are organic.
Yeah. Sure, yeah, and I think we've done it, you know, we've done that over the years, and and just with working with our local produce and our local, and adding these gardens, the more gardens we can do, and if we can get our greenhouses,
Yeah, and and also. Yes.
Yeah.
then we can supply our own list all season long, we don't even need to worry about all these recalls anymore, because it's gotta be in our own ground.
Home food, right, that would be awesome, yeah. Absolutely. Yeah, that would be fantastic.
So, yeah, that's the goal.
Yeah, no, I, and and I'm quite pleased with this presentation that you, and look, going forward, uh, I I'm I'm looking to be a customer, I love the fact that John Stocker Institute, I did some research on that.
Good. Yes. Yeah, they're great.
They're actually a company that participates in in informing uh students about the importance of nutrition, because nutrition is.
Yes. Right, and I love working with them, they're awesome.
Yeah, I mean, I I've seen, uh, being in the fitness business, in in getting children to eat correctly, we've seen their grades go up, and I I know it works, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
That said, I would just personally like to see all these, and thank you for coming in tonight, I I we we like to keep, uh, 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 I definitely like to have you come back in and see how these are going
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely, yeah.
for the next years, and especially like with the breakfast program, and, you know, you got that beautiful bagel maker there, that's, I mean, the equipment there is top notch, it really is, and people need to know that.
Yeah. It's gorgeous, yes, the, up top in this building, we've got the best.
And and the service, they'll cook whatever you want, so I'd just like to see better ingredients, that's, I, that's all I'm looking for.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, so, the more scratch cooking we do, and I love it, and, yeah, and that's what we encourage, yeah.
I know, Ashley, I have another question, sorry, just a quick question, so going with the theme of the breakfast data gathering, kind of, I wonder if it makes sense, like,
Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Because I feel like there's room in the, like, I mean, if Principal Scott is getting people delivering fresh feast for their children, clearly there is a little wiggle room for some of the people in town to maybe spend more than two seventy-five on their kid's lunch, if they're getting.
Well, that's true, we definitely wanna be sensitive to the people that can't.
For sure, for sure, but.
Yeah, because while after you reduce is low, there's always that percentage that just missed that line, and they do struggle, um, so we definitely wanna be sensitive for those people.
Yeah.
Right, right. I hear you a hundred percent. But what I'm thinking is, maybe it's worth figuring out whether there's a way to gather data from the community about the appetite for people who are not buying their kids lunches here,
Mm-hmm.
if there were changes in the ingredients, whether that would drastically increase the percentage of users.
Yeah. Yeah.
But two customers trying to get to you.
I think any information is good information, and the more information we get, the better off we're gonna be.
Right, yeah. But two customers.
So I just feel like maybe, and maybe that increase in users would allow for a, like a very minimal increase in the costs, but
Yes. Yeah.
and also an increase in the selection, I think.
Yeah, definitely.
The interesting thing about that, you know, all about driving user participation, is we also heard in the twenty minutes and the twenty-five minutes for a lunch, that getting through the line, paying and getting to the table takes up a big chunk of that, so we have to find, we have to find that sweet spot of how many more subscribers to buying lunch Right, that's, right, that's true.
That's true. Yeah.
can we physically accommodate in the time that we have allotted for lunch?
Right, right.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
And if, if we, if we, if the programs you have in place drive up participation, maybe we need to look at recess, you know, at twenty-five minutes.
Yeah. Right.
Or maybe it needs to be twenty and lunch needs to, I'm I'm just saying, and and then we have the complexity of the contract and the and the learning time, time on learning, right?
Right.
Yeah. I know. Right.
I I know there's a district um that does do mandated lunch, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, mandated breakfast on the cart, kids come in after the bell, they,
Mm-hmm. Yes.
whether they've, whether they've had breakfast or not, they have the choice to grab something off the cart and they go to the auditorium during first period, so
And I. Yes.
there's this time on learning with that approach as well, and this is in a a a a poor district, you know, where most of the kids are on um free lunch programs, so
Right. Right.
it it it's, it's a complex.
Yeah, it is.
positive problem to have, we just have to figure out.
And there is a bill before Congress right now for mandatory after-the-bell breakfast.
Yeah.
But only for high-need schools, so those are the schools with forty percent higher free and reduced.
Right. Yeah.
Uh, a lot of those schools are already doing it, um, but I I think, I think there's just so much benefit to it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah. This is great. I, Barb, you had your hand up earlier.
Oh, yeah, just a, um.
Name an address, please.
Barbara Seven, I have a question to that, Barbara Seven, two sixty Jerusalem, um, uh, just a couple of things, in terms of averaging for class size, is if, I think if you take twenty kids off for the pre-K programs, the average per K to twelve would be a hundred and eighteen per class, so just for calculation purposes, um, and then, I I don't know, I think it's twenty that are pre-K, right, roughly?
Yeah, it was two, two sections.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Something like that, um, and then the other thing, I was just on the website for Dean Brands and Garelic, so they say they don't have, use growth hormones on their website, just as a cross-check, I don't know if they used to, and maybe they don't, or?
Maybe they used to, yeah.
I think they did use to.
Like, I can like two sentences.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's not organic, but they say they don't use the growth hormones at this point.
Right. And, and we, we purchase Garelic, yes, which is Dean's.
I, no, that's on the website, research it.
No, I thought I saw, I thought I saw moo milk, in in in.
Yeah.
No, it's, we have, that's Dean Brands, yeah.
That's Dean Brands as well.
Do we serve moo milk?
It's all Garelic, though.
Right.
Okay, on the, on this particular carton itself, it says that studies have shown that non-growth hormones do not uh affect the cow, so what that says is.
But I think it also says, but they don't quote me, I think it also says on it, we don't use it, but they would just, but I, we'll look it back, yeah, we'll follow that.
They said they don't use it. The, the, right.
Yeah.
I I would, I would look at that, I I don't think, I don't think anybody would put that on a carton, even if you don't do that, like.
They could get it to.
You know, and like, oh, it's, there's no study on there, but, you know.
It is strange.
But you know what, it, it, it has to do with the USDA and the labeling requirements and, and it might, it might not have to do with marketing or, or anything like that.
I'd look into it.
Yes.
Okay, could you, could.
USDA is pretty strict, yeah.
I would just ask if you could follow up on that. I'd like to know the answer. Cause if we're using steroids in our milk, I don't feel comfortable about that, to be honest, as a, as a school.
Yes. Yeah, I know, right. Absolutely, yeah.
It's right, it's right on their website, so you can check it. I mean, I, I think getting organic milk is a great idea.
Yeah.
I'm five, that's what I buy, so, seems like it, and it's not, I don't think it's huge difference, I don't think it'd crush your, your budget, but, at any rate. And then my other comment was what sort of Ellen brought up, like, is our goal to have a hundred percent participation in our lunch program, which I wouldn't think it would be, um.
I think that's every school's goal, but it's not.
Is it? Okay, all right.
Should I start?
Yeah, so that's it. I think that breakfast is interesting. My son's school, I think two years ago, they said we have a blanket free lunch for everyone. They're completely different demographic than this district is, so, and I, I do know from my teaching days, I think some information would filter in.
Yes.
I mean, I had students that were hungry, that didn't have bed to sleep on, that type of thing, and I was aware of that, so I can usually circle back. So hopefully then nurses, teachers, um, and other, you know, professionals at their school are giving a heads up so that the district can be aware. That kind of, I think that's how it usually works in schools that, I mean, but you're not gonna catch everyone, so it's, it's an interesting thing to look into.
Right. Yeah.
I don't know what the, I've always wondered how they time. I feed my own son, we all, again, we're outliers because we all have allergies.
Right.
So I am a parent that has delivered on occasion, just so my daughter can have pizza like the other kids on a Friday, but I don't deliver other stuff. Um, but, uh, I, I don't, I don't know how they work the timing out for breakfast and does that involve additional staffing or, you know, do those kids come in early?
It would, yeah, it would be, yes, yeah.
Give it with during the night.
Yeah, sort of busts, then what is it, do you just schedule?
If it was after the bell, it would be fine.
So.
So, yeah.
I think it would be stacking and scheduling.
Yes, all part of the research we have to do, so, anyway, that's great.
Great, thank you very much.
That was awesome, that was great.
Thank you. Thank you for your persistence and patience and, and the wonderful key.
Thank you. Thank you.
So next up, we have, uh, Dr. Collins, who's going to present an overview of our MCAS results this year. Um, as folks know, MCAS, um, results are mailed home this fall, they, they fall, and our report card, our official report card actually comes out in January. So, um, that's, that's a typical thing, the state releases, uh, MCAS report cards. Oh. Okay, cause I just got, what did I get? You, you got, you got cancer for it, you got your, your, your children's results, but the official school report card, which will be posted on our website, um, comes out in January, so, um, Dr. Collins.
Thanks, everybody. So I'm gonna take you through, um, you know, an overview of this year three for the next generation MCAS for all the lower grades, um, high school MCAS isn't really for that. Um, so when we're looking at the results, um, this is just kind of a quick overview, I'm not sure, I know some of the members have had this before, but some of the new members.
From last year.
So they, we now have the next generation MCAS the past couple of years, it was called the, the, um, legacy before. And, um, the achievement levels on the MCAS are not equivalent as the legacy ones, so they, they even have different terminology, which we'll go over. Um, and you have the standards for meeting expectations, which is the next generation, that's where, you know, you would expect your kids to be. Um, they're more rigorous than the standards for reaching the proficient legacy, so, and the legacy exam, so it's a little bit different, um, that's why we have the apples, oranges picture on there, um.
Goes a lot with the food, I suppose.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
It keeps the theme going, I love it.
Yeah.
Transitioning.
Exactly.
Promoting good food.
Exactly. It doesn't mean that the students are learning less, um, or more, it just means that it's a little bit of a different measure that they're using. And, um, but nonetheless, the test results, they're similar in, um, they're more similar, similar for the grades in the subject areas. Um, so all the tests were on the computer last year except for science, um, and that was the first year, I believe, that everything was done, um, I wasn't here, but that's what I heard. Um, and the next generation MCAS, um, in all grades except for high school science, um, there's different types of questions on the, on that next generation. They're, you know, they're a little bit meatier, they have, um, sometimes multiple parts, so a little bit more challenging for our kids. Um, the essays, they are, those are a little more challenging too, um, because they are looking for kids to synthesize and compare and contrast and looking at different kinds of literature and making some, making some determinations around it. Um, and the achievement levels are exceeding, meeting, partially meeting and not meeting expectations. And we'll talk a little bit about that, um, in the next couple of slides. And the legacy of MCAS from this past year, for the two thousand nineteen, still use the achievement levels that everybody heard before, advanced proficient needs improvement and a warning. The one other thing that, um, will be different for, um, students in the classes for two thousand, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty-two is the, um, competency determination. In the past, it was you had to hit proficient. You can, um, partially meet expectations for those two years and there's some other criteria that they're looking at as they transition over.
Okay.
Uh, and this is kind of, again, here's that apples and oranges, just so you can see some of those differences. So, um, the legacy, the scale score is two hundred, two eighty, the next generation is four forty to five sixty. You see, that's a big difference. And it can be confusing for, for anybody looking at that, right, when you see, um, those next numbers. So just looking at advanced and exceeding expectations, so advanced for the legacy, students at this level demonstrate a comprehensive and in-depth understanding of rigorous subject matter and provide sophisticated solutions to complex problems. Little bit of a different slant is a student who performed at this level exceeded grade level expectations by demonstrating mastery of the subject matter. Import, more importantly, you look at meeting expectations means that a student performed at the grade level expectations and academically on track to succeed in a current grade in that subject. I think that's the one thing that, when we're looking at those next generations, it really more aligned, so what are our expectations for those students? And where are they on track? Have, are they meeting those expectations and are they on track to make it? It's just a little bit different way of looking at it and, um, I think a little, maybe a little more authentic too, around what we're doing for our kids.
Again, I think one of the things that stood out in this sub, you switched from legacy to X Gen, is the, um, the difficulty in really achieving that exceeding expectations.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it was, it was a tough pill to swallow for folks who, maybe their son or daughter's had received advanced and maybe were achieving at the same level, but it wasn't being recognized in the same category.
Yeah. Right.
There are far fewer folks state, across the state that are getting that, uh, exceeding expectations than were getting the advanced in the legacy.
Exactly, so you're gonna see more kids meeting expectations than proficient like in the past. You'll see more of that block.
That's a trick, everywhere.
And each student gets a, they receive a scale score, a performance level, and a growth percentile for each subject. There's no growth for science. All right, um, any questions about that? So the student growth percentile gets a little bit confusing and, um, so I thought I'd just review it a little bit. So the student's performance is compared to other students statewide with a similar test history. Um, so they look at their academic peers and that's the cohorts or that's what they're looking at. Um, and the difference is expressed in a percentile between one and ninety-nine. So the example here to kind of live it, give it clarity is how much did John improve in mathematics from fifth to sixth grade relative to his academic peers? So students that scored the same the year before, we look at it again and we see, how did he compare to those kids in that same group? So if John improved more than sixty-five percent of his academic peers, then his growth percentile would be sixty-five. He didn't grow sixty-five percent, but he is at the sixty, sixty-fifth percentile. So he did sixty-five percent better, like, better than his peers in his grade level. Um, and so when we're looking at group, we look at the average student growth percentile. Questions about that one? Cause that's always the tricky one.
This is an important one for us too, because we're a high achieving district.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
When we're focusing on what we can really make ground on, this jumps out. So this is it, so we're really trying to, to drive our kids to, who are achieving at a high level, to really achieve better than their peers who are at that level.
Right.
So it's a, it's a, it's a real focus so that each individual kid can focus on what he, what he or she is doing and not rest on the laurels of maybe doing well. Cause we're continuing to.
Well, it's, we always want kids to grow, you know, that's what the state's looking for, yeah. Are you, did you do a little bit better than you did the year before? Good. Prior to that, I'm probably getting ahead of myself, it was more like everybody, everybody needs to hit hundred percent efficiency. Well, they knew that that really was, that really didn't work, right? So now we just wanna look, do we have growth and what, and what is our growth for our students and our, and our district?
Leslie, can we, can we take that?
Yeah. Yeah.
And extrapolate it out to a ridiculous scenario?
Sure.
So if John and all his peers achieved the same improvement year over year, then there's no growth percentile.
No, because the test, the test gets harder, so that's where the change happens.
So they reset it.
But, but say the academic peers all did the same, say, say the academic peer group did the exact same as John did from one year to the next.
They reset. Mm-hmm.
There's no growth.
Oh, if, if every, I suppose.
And if, if everyone in that cohort in that academic peer group.
Yeah, it would be. Yeah.
Highly unlikely, but, but.
Yeah, I guess that's the piece, but yeah, yeah, that's a possibility, I suppose, yeah.
But theoretically though, then there's no growth, even though they all improved upon their own performance the year before.
Right, cause they all, right, because you're saying that they were all at the same level. I, yeah, I guess so, it would be hard to do, I mean, you're talking across the state, so.
No, I, no, no, I, no, but it, it's, you know, if they're, if they all got a B this year and then next year they're in the next level and they all get a B again.
Yeah, but, yeah, but, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Or they all get an A.
Mm-hmm.
They all improved, but their growth did not.
Right, right.
Compared to their peers, that's weird.
But that would be hard to.
Well, they, well, the, kind of way I always understood is that the cohorts are created over a two-year period.
Two-year period, right, yeah.
So, you know, your, your achievement does, i- if you achieved really highly one year and then you went down on your test the next year, you do get with a new group so that when you're looked at the next year, um, and it kind of works that way into your pockets.
Right. Right, but to your.
There's a formula.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 everybody.
So it would be hard, but it would be hard, it'd be, it's almost impossible, like you said, to be able to, but, yeah, but I guess in a perfect world, yeah.
It would be impossible, but.
And so this is just an overall of, um, the percentage of students who were meeting expectations and then exceeding expectations. And it's just broken down by content, ELA, and math, and science, and then just what their growth is. And your typical growth or your expected growth would be between forty and sixty. The one that's a little different is that the legacy test was, or she says science is a little bit different, so you could.
So, I'm sorry.
I'll move over that, yeah.
Yes, please. So in Derek Kill.
Mm-hmm.
In ELA.
Yeah.
Our students perform better than fifty-seven point six percent of their academic peers.
At the state.
Yep. At the state level in ELA, that's what that says.
Yep. Two categories.
Right.
That's, that's all.
What?
That's for two categories, right, meeting and exceeding.
Yes, meeting.
So that's not the whole.
Oh, it's not the whole, it's not the whole thing, right, right, right.
No, that's the whole, yeah.
No, that, that, no, that's the ELA growth for the whole grade, for the whole school.
Right. No, no. Whole, the whole. Yes, the whole school, but, but we, I just gave you the percentage of them meeting and exceeding.
So.
Right.
So remember, you got, you have two other categories, uh, partially meeting and not meeting.
Right.
So we're looking at the two highest categories, uh.
Right.
Right, but then the ELA growth doesn't involve those two columns, it involves the whole.
Right. The whole, the whole school.
So it shows the girl the, so you, right, so that involves every student.
I see the whole school for everybody. Yeah. So this, but those percentages do not include every student. The seventy-three percent, no, cause it's just meeting and exceeding.
Which percentage is?
Right.
That's just meeting and exceeding.
Right.
The next percentage involves the whole student body.
Okay.
All right.
That's your test.
And then this is not our darks, this is just kind of what we look like compared to our neighbors in the store, um, states above and then where in the, and then we're up for the both. And we fall, um, you know, and we fall in the middle of the pack, um, for most of it, um, and again, that's, we're looking at your meeting and exceeding expectations. And then, you know, like, growth overall for the whole school, not, I'm for the district, not for just the schools. So I thought a little bit, um, it would be good to talk a little bit about the accountability system and what it is. So, um, you know, this is set by the state and its policies and practices that we use to measure and, and they use it to hold schools accountable and districts responsible for raising student achievement for all students. Um, and it's to prompt and get people to, to improve, right, so it's that, did you do better than you did last year? Um, and so this all started in two thousand seventeen. So the new accountability system has different indicators, what counts, and I'll go over that in the next slide, exactly what those are. Um, it looks at the targets, again, based on two thousand eighteen, in two thousand nineteen, did you do better? There's no more AYP, PPI, any of those levels. Remember, we used to hear about, you know, level one, level two, level, that's all gone now. Um, now, the other thing that's different is that they're looking at the lowest performing student subgroup. It used to be high needs, now it's lowest performing students, like, subgroup. And what that means is it doesn't matter, um, whether, what the needs are, it's just that lowest twenty-five percent of students. And there's always gonna be a lowest percentile, right? Um, and it actually opens up some doors around how we look at kids, um.
Can you cross any, any group?
Yeah, it doesn't matter, so it's, um.
So it's not a defined cohort group, it's just the bottom.
Correct.
Which is great, because that means that you're always responsible for looking at your students who are struggling, no matter where they're coming from.
Yeah. Right.
I think that is agreement with the state.
Yeah, I do too.
Mm-hmm.
The first one I heard it, I was like, we'll never get a, we're always gonna have a twenty-five percent. Well, that's right, you're always gonna have a twenty-five percent.
We should always do here.
Right, yeah, exactly, we're never gonna, cause in my head too, I'm, I'm going back to the old scales too of like, getting everybody to proficient.
Right, right. Right. Right.
So, anyway, but this is helpful and, um, and that information can really be helpful when you're looking at individual students and looking at, you know, where, where they need support. Um, and the other things is there's, you're looking at, you're compared to self and compare to other measures. So this is the, these are the new indicators. So if you look to the left, you'll see indicators around achievements, student growth, high school completion, English and language proficiency, and some additional indicators. This is kind of like, um, Laura Tilton, our consultant says, it's kind of like the soup that they, with all the ingredients that they put in. If you look at the measures in the middle, there's ELA achievement now, and it goes down, there's growth, it breaks it down. Um, some things don't apply to the elementary schools or the middle schools, right, so high school completion, that would only be for the high school, um, that's why it's blacked out. Um, English language learners, we also don't have enough of a cohort, you have to have twenty or more, we don't in the district or in, in any of the schools and across the district. And then, um, additional indicators, which, these are the newer ones, chronic absenteeism, percentage of students completing advanced coursework. So you get points and the, and, and this is formula that they put in, and then it's weighted, and these are, this is where we end up.
Remember, chronic absenteeism involves all absences, not, it doesn't just confuse.
Right, not just excused.
Unexcused absences, and is it over eighteen, is that it?
Yeah, it's ten percent, so eighteen, eighteen days. And it doesn't, you don't, you don't lose or gain any more points after eighteen, once the student hits eighteen. That's it, it stays the same.
Do these look like, um, contra indicators? Cause chronic absenteeism, I would think, would be a, a negative indicator, but percentage of students completing advanced coursework would be a positive.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's, right, and that's the whole thing, it's this whole mix that happens, um, and they wait it.
Are there more than those two?
No, this is it, but this is a, that's a lot of, I mean, look at all the measures that they have in there.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. So this is where you compare, um, to ourself, right, I let, I put this at the bottom, we'll kind of talk, we'll go more about it. So these are the, so indicators, the targets that each, um, are set for each school by DESI. Right, and that's that thing, they look at two thousand eighteen and they tell you what we'd like you to do the following year. Um, and they look at all the student groups, they look at the lowest performing student groups. And then the points are awarded based on how the indicator data compare to the indicator target. So this is where they're looking at what you did last year, so you can be compared to yourself and what you look like this year. So we've made substantial progress toward targets. If you look at the bottom, it's all the way over to the right, um, where you need broad, comprehensive support. And we're never gonna be there. There's substantial progress toward our targets, then meeting or exceeding our tar, um, exceeding targets, and then schools of recognition. And so that shows us the points that, and they use that and that decides where we are on this particular.
So do you have any idea how many schools in the Commonwealth are schools of recognition?
Uh, there are sixty-five this year.
Sixty-five individual schools or?
Out of three hundred, yeah, yeah, that's, that's. Or district. Individual schools.
Individual schools.
They, they do it by school.
By school, so, I mean, three hundred and fifty-one districts, I mean, you're talking about a thousand schools.
Right, so there are s, yeah, sixty-five at least.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, that's what, thirteen hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
Thirteen hundred schools in the. Thirteen hundred schools in the.
It's hard, it's really hard to do.
Yeah, okay.
To be a school of recognition is hard to do.
Okay.
You know, it's doable, and we, and we, and we will.
Right, right.
But, but yeah, but it's, it is, um, but that's why there's only sixty-five.
Right.
Now, this is where they compare to others, so this is that, those accountability percentiles. So those indicators that we saw on that other chart, they get ranked and they get combined to determine the accountability percentile. And that's that formula, and I couldn't explain it to you. Pay me a million dollars, but, but it's there. Um, and so only schools get percentiles, not districts. Um, both the percentile on the target information are used to determine an overall classification when we're looking at our MCAS and where we're gonna, where we land. And the classification is for all the schools, so we, our classification is not requiring assistance or intervention.
Which used to equate to a level one or a level two or something like that.
I don't even know that you can do that, yeah, because I think the thing about the, all those leveling, those were deceiving.
Okay.
So, if you, you could be a school that was an underperforming school, but you would be considered a level one school because you made really good growth, but you were still a low-performing school.
Yeah.
So there's nothing more frustrating than being a high-performing school, doing really well, and never making level one. Or, or, or a school that's underperforming, making level one, and you're making level one, doesn't make any sense, so that's why I thought it couldn't, it really didn't make sense.
Okay.
So, everything, all our, the district and all the schools are making substantial progress. And this is where they look at, you know, us as schools. So, Deer Hill, their over, their overall percentile is compared to other non-high school schools statewide. We fall into a little, uh, to a little different category last year, that will be different going forward.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, they look at the high school and the middle school, their overall percentile compared to other combination schools that both have a high school and a non-high school grade. Um, there's only about a hundred in the state, it's pretty small of course, so that'll be very different next year. Right, we'll have high school, and then we'll have the middle school.
That'll be a big.
Once we compare.
That'll be a very significant.
Yeah.
All right.
And then these are, um, I just put in each grade and each content area just to show you where we were around our percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectations, where they are against the state, they're meeting and exceeding expecta- expectations, sorry, and then the average scale score, and there's no growth, it's a great. So this is ELA, so sixty-four percent of our kids are meeting or exceeding expectations. Math, fifty-three percent were meeting and exceeding expectations. And you can stop me at any slide if you're sure. Um, and then here we move into grade four ELA, and this is, um, now where you're gonna see some growth per- percentiles, right? Because now we've had them for two years, they've taken, they've taken it. So eighty-five percent of our students are meeting and exceeding expectation. And the student profile is sixty-four point five. And again, forty to sixty percent is, you know, is pretty standard. Um, and then here's grade four for math. Seventy-one percent of our students are meeting or exceeding, and our growth is, percentile is fifty-two point five. ELA for grade five, seventy-one percent. And fifty-one point seven for growth. Grade five math, fifty-six percentile meeting and exceeding expectations. And forty-two point three for growth percentile. Grade five, there's no, there's not gonna be any growth, because they only take it, like, five, eight, ten, sixty-four percent. So I know you had a chance, so I won't go through and read all these, but you have, you can see, you know, that we're, we're always above the state when it comes to meeting and exceeding expectations, and our growth falls between forty and sixty. These are our high school scores. So, now that we have the data, what do we do with it, right? One of the big things about the data is, it has to be in a certain context. You can't just, I mean, data, you can interpret your data any way you want to, but the important part of it that makes it valuable is that we take the data, we put it into context, and then, we then use it to improve our practice. So, one of the things that we're doing is we've worked with, and we'll continue to work with Laura Tilton, she is a big specialist, she worked with our data teams early on. Um, we worked at a, we were at all the high, at all the schools, um, she worked with all the grade levels and all the content areas. Um, so, at that point, and we'll continue to analyze all the results, um, at all the levels. We created the data teams, and we'll continue to work together. The elementary school has dashboards that were created by Laura through, um, Google, and that just makes it little user, really user-friendly for teachers. Um, and we're doing an item analysis within grades and subjects to kind of look at trends and patterns, to see where where our strengths are and where we need to do a little more work. Um, we all, MCAS is just one data point, we look at all data when we're looking at kids to make sure that we get a comprehensive picture of of our students. Um, we use it to inform our classroom instruction, uh, we use it and will continue to use it to adjust our curriculum and align our, our pre-K through twelve, and that's just part of the process that we're working on this year. It gives us time to talk about it, I think one of the nice things that happened when we're working with Laura is teachers really enjoyed, from what they're telling me, that they really liked looking at the data, and it was kind of an interesting way to look at it, and to really take time, to have that opportunity to reflect and talk about what it is they're doing in their classrooms and what they're doing with their curriculum. Um, and then they use it for targeted support, so that's one of the indicators that they might use. And it's that twenty-five percent, you know, that subgroup, making sure that we're looking at, um, at those kids, and at other kids. And then I also at the end put just some information for people to be able to access, because all of the information I gave you is all on the website for you to have, it's all in a district profile, so. All right, so. Any questions?
Anyone? No.
I did, I didn't, I have a lot of questions.
Yeah, it's gonna let you know, but.
Um, so I've been looking at this data for a number of years.
Mm-hmm.
And have, have been concerned about what I see as sort of a, a slow decline.
Mm-hmm.
And when you look at, I think it's slide.
So a decline in all content areas, or or just in general?
And comp, and comparing ourselves, so when I first moved here, we were about achieving at the same level of Hingham as Hingham in the Commonwealth.
Okay, so you've been watching a, kind of that slide that I showed, or that shows us, uh, at our neighbors.
So, yeah, so it's this slide here.
When you're talking about, okay. Yep.
So, I think it's always interesting to say, okay, this many students are meeting the expectations,
Mm-hmm.
but it's also really important to say who's not, what's the percentage that are not, and when you start to think about it in that way.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
To me, it's concerning.
Mm-hmm.
So, thirty-nine percent of our students are not meeting expectations in math. That's pretty significant to me.
Yep.
Forty percent are not meeting expectations in science. Twenty-seven percent are not meeting expectations in ELA, ELA.
Mm-hmm.
We are ten percentage points below Hingham in ELA. We are thirteen percentage points below Hingham in math.
Mm-hmm.
And we are eighteen percentage points below Hingham in science.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
That was not the case when I first moved to this district.
Mm-hmm. When did you move here?
Um, two thousand nine.
I'm sorry, two thousand?
Nine.
Oh, nine, okay, so ten years ago, okay.
So, I'm really concerned, particularly with the math and science scores, and, um, for those who have known me for a while,
Mm-hmm.
about five years ago, I came before the committee and was extremely concerned
Mm-hmm.
because our student growth percentiles were outside of the margin of what DESI considers the margin of success.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And what happens if the student growth percentiles are low is eventually the achievement drops.
Mm-hmm.
And that's exactly what's happened here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for those that are looking at our AP scores and thinking they're out of sight, which they are, they're exceptional. Those students, that cohort of students had Everyday Math, which was a fantastic math program.
Mm-hmm.
And we switched to Envision.
Mm-hmm.
And it seems that things have been in a downward trend since that change. Um, when I look at the data, this is the Comprehensive Assessment System, that's what it stands for.
Mm-hmm.
Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System. So we should really be digging in and looking at everything.
Mm-hmm.
And I was very pleased that you showed us the, um, different categories.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I looked at the accountability data for that lowest performing subgroup. And I've been looking at that for some time.
Mm-hmm.
Well, just the growth for some time. And this is easy to do for anyone who wants to do it at home.
Okay.
You can scroll back in the years.
Okay.
And so, in our math, we have, um, had low growth for a number of years.
Yeah.
And in our lowest performing subgroup, this is also typical growth low, it says. It's, it's also this year, again, low, with our lowest twenty-five percent. So we have that end of the spectrum that's not having high growth. And then, on the other end of the spectrum, we have those students in the exceeding expectations. And I'm always very interested in that data, because we wanna make sure that every student in this district is working towards goals that are meaningful for them. And that means differentiating the instruction. That means having a system in place to provide tiered instruction. Um, I do have some questions about our RTI, because I don't think in all of this MCAS data, we can forget about grades K through two,
Correct.
because we know, and there's settled science that says if your kids aren't reading proficiently by the end of grade three, there's a seventy-four percent chance that they will not be reading proficiently
Correct.
by the end of ninth grade, so this is a critical period.
Correct.
This data doesn't address that, so I do, at the end of what I have to say, wanna look at that data.
Yeah, and it is a pre-K through twelve assessment, you're absolutely right.
Right. So, so we have this low growth in the lowest performing twenty-five percent. Let's look at the exceeding cata- exceeding expectations categories. And let's just take our students and think about them compared to the state average. So that's what I did using this, and anyone can find this online. So, in third grade, our ELA scores for those students exceeding expectations were below the state average.
Mm-hmm.
In math in third grade, the number of our students exceed, exceeding expectations was below the state average. In fourth grade, we were equal in math to the state average. In fifth grade, we were below the state average for exceeding expectations in math. In seventh grade, we were below the state average in exceeding expectations in ELA. Our student growth percentiles outside the margin of success at thirty-eight. We were below the state average in math for those students exceeding expectations in seventh grade. We were below the state average in eighth grade for students in exceeding math. We were below the state average in science in eighth grade for those students in exceeding expectations.
Mm-hmm.
So, that tells me that we're not challenging our top students.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm very concerned about, we have started RTI in Osgood with March Tree.
Mm-hmm.
And it looks like we've started it in Deer Hill with the wind.
Mm-hmm.
That RTI model is critical for making sure that students are getting the targeted instruction that they need. So, for those that don't know what RTI stands for, it's, it's response to intervention. And so, uh, do you mind if I just ask what's going on in the RTI? Because I have questions about that, because it does relate to the entry scores of our third grade graders who just took. Oh, I just actually wanna also talk about the scaled scores.
Sure.
Okay, so the scaled scores, if you look at them.
Mm-hmm.
There are many of them that are right on the edge, but for not meeting expectations. So, our fifth grade math scores did not meet expectations. So we, we, our scaled score was four ninety-nine seven, which means technically, our fifth grade students, the average, we are not meeting expectations in math. Um, we're, a lot of them are really close. So, in seventh grade math, we're at five oh one. In seventh grade ELA, we're at five oh four. In science eighth grade, we're at five oh two. In math in eighth grade, we're at five oh three. In third grade math, we're at five oh one, so we just squeaked into that meeting expectations.
That's true. Yep.
So, our district accommodation plan is, you know, in place.
Mm-hmm.
Particularly for our most vulnerable students. Students who are not meeting benchmark, but are not yet, are not on IEPs. And we all know the eligibility process for becoming, being on an IP can take time.
Right.
And in grades K through three, that's valuable time that's wasted for reading instruction. So that's the benefit of.
That's a K one, K one, you're really, really not focused.
And that's, that's what RTI is designed to do.
Exactly, yeah.
Is to help those kids that are below that benchmark.
Mm-hmm.
And catch them when we can, because the trajectory can be changed dramatically.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Absolutely.
So, my questions about RTI are, what are the reading assessments that we're using?
Mm-hmm.
To universally screen students.
Right.
What benchmarks are we using to provide the tiered instructions?
Right.
What assessments, in addition to DIBELS, are we using to identify students' needs? Do we administer a phonics decoding survey in grades K through three? Who is responsible for gathering and monitoring literacy data? What instruction is given to students not meeting benchmark and in need of strategic intervention in tier two? Who is delivering it? Is this instruction delivered in a small group setting? What evidence-based instructional method is used? Formal evaluations and diagnostic, diagnostic testing to determine eligibility for special education can take time. So we wanna make sure we're inter, um, providing intervention early. Um, RTI is a preventative model, so we wanna catch kids. For tier three students, those students who are scoring significantly below benchmark or not meeting the cut points for RISB, particularly students not on IEPs, what evidence-based instruction is administered? Who is responsible for administering it, delivering it? Progress monitoring. Response to intervention is based on, you intervene, and then you say, did our intervention work?
Right. Mm-hmm.
What program are we using for tier three students, those significantly below benchmark? What program are we using for tier three students, those significantly below benchmark? And who progress monitors them and how often is that done? Are parents notified that their child is receiving tier three instruction? I think we have a nice start.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that our RTI model in the elementary grades and is, it's such an effective model nationally that schools that use this model and are seeing phenomenal results from this model, they're taking that model and they're using it for math.
Mm-hmm.
And they're using it for social and emotional learning. And so, I'm not convinced that we have a strong structure yet. I think we're inching our way there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I just think that that would, to me, be a budget priority. To strengthen up the, the delivery of instruction in the RTI model.
Sure. I couldn't agree more, in the sense that I think RTI is so important. You know, I did my dissertation on it, right? So you and I can have a cup of coffee for a couple hours and talk about it. Um, I think all the things you bring up are valid. I think with the volume that you just asked me for, what I would love to do is actually bring people back in and do a presentation on it. Because I think that you're asking so many great things and I think it's important for all the people that are involved in it to have a say. Cause you're, you're asking me some details I may not exactly have around who, who exactly is administering some of the things. Um, I can tell you that I have conversations with Principal Farrell and Principal Sullivan on a regular basis about what's going on around those pieces. And I meet with the reading specialist once a month, same as the math specialist. Um, so, you know, obviously, that's important to make sure that I know what's going on because I'm trying, trying to catch up to speed. Um, but I would love to have a presentation around that piece, if that would work for you. Cause I wouldn't have all the answers right this second for you. But I'd love to do something that shows that.
Yeah, and also add, in terms of being a priority. RTI is a huge priority for us.
Yeah.
Going forward and, uh, looking at it, um, this year, as we move into next year,
Absolutely.
we have incredible new, um, group of folks who have a lot of expertise in RTI. Uh, that can, that can really help our kids, um, and help build those systems.
Yeah, and a lot, yeah.
There's a lot of change. There's a lot of stuff going on.
I just, I-
It's still developed just this year as-
I mean, I can give you, we can pull something together so you can see everything. The, the reading specialist worked all summer long pulling together all of the assessments and kind of coming through, figuring out what are the best assessments? What's the process we're gonna use? How are we gonna benchmark? How are we gonna progress monitor?
Right.
How do we make sure we, you know, keep track of kids? They're in there coaching, um, teachers on how to give assessments or also giving lessons. I mean, there's a lot happening. So I think that that's, it would be really good for, for us to talk about it. And it's, it's a work in progress, like anything.
But good instruction requires people.
If that's-
And are, good, solid RTI models require
Mm-hmm.
a team.
Correct.
I, I'd love to see teams around this in our, in our schools.
Yeah.
And I would, I would think that that should be a budget priority.
Mm-hmm. So we're looking at all those pieces, you know, the principal-
Yeah, we could, I mean, ju- uh, just to make it, uh, just to answer a little bit, we do have RTI teams.
We do.
We do have teams at every school. And we do have protocols and procedures in place. Can they be better? Absolutely. Do we have tier dimensions? We certainly do.
We do.
Um, so we'd be, you know, be very willing to, you know, work with Dr. Collins to present some of that. But I think the point I'm hearing is, is very well taken. It's that, you know, we have some work to do in, in helping our students at all levels um, achieve on this test in particular, but, um, as a measure, and it is a measure.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's not the whole measure out there, uh, to see our students doing. But, um, I, I would say that I, I, I can say safely, we're looking at it very closely. Um, we're, we're looking at this data, since I've been here, this is the closest we've looked at it. Um-
And we still have more work to do. This was just the beginning.
And, uh, and it is, it is a, a driving factor in, in, in sort of the situation, so, you know.
But yeah, they all, they, you mentioned that they have WAC to Read at Osgead, they have, um, Wind-
But they only have it twice a week. That's not a robust enough model.
Well, that's one, well, that's one, that's one component. Then there's other, then other students are getting more intervention. So that's an overall piece, the Wind and the WAC to Read.
Can we remember?
Then there is specific interventions going in for kids that need tier two and tier three intervention. So there is more on top of that. And so they are looking at individual students. So there's kind of these levels within those tiers.
Yeah. Yeah. And can I speak a little bit to, you know, you highlighting the math data? You know, well, we looked at that too.
Oh, yeah.
And that's why, as we voted and we presented, we were looking at a new math program. Um, and that we've had a team working on that. And that's why that's a huge budget priority. It's cause we realized that, that, um, Envision was not providing our students with, with what was needed. And that was one of my first things that I, I latched onto when I became superintendent because the data's showing us.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm hearing you a lot clear on that one. And we've been doing some good work to, to change that. So thank you for that.
So can, um, I like your idea, Leslie, of maybe coming back and doing a presentation on RTI?
Absolutely.
And maybe Jen, you can work with Leslie to make sure all of your questions,
Yeah, if you want to.
you know, are sent with Leslie and make sure that, that questions that you have are part of the presentation and answered. And, um, so that we all have a comprehensive understanding of what's going on with that. And I would echo Dr. Sullivan's point about math. Um, we, we have been seeing a decline, but you did address it. And, um, I think, I think overall, I concur with Jen because prior to all of you being here, we used to benchmark against other districts. It was one of the projects that I did at the end of every year. And we have been, you know, we talk about measuring against ourselves. We talk about measuring now with Next Gen, measuring against our academic peers. And, and people, I had a Realtor call me and say, what's going on? Like, someone says Hingham is better, you know, because of the testing. And they wanna look at the school districts. So whether we like it or not, it is part of the social community of education. I mean, pe- people talk about it. So, i- we have, we have to consider that you put it in as a measure. And it's one of many.
Right, right.
So we have to kind of look at it. And I don't know if we can look at Hingham because everyone's on Next Gen at the same time.
Right.
They haven't had a head start on us and, you know, other districts haven't.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if there's something intrinsically going on in Hingham that we can learn from. I, I don't know if that, if, I don't know if that's part of, part of what we do is reach out to other districts who seem to be-
Absolutely. Yeah, so we do.
Well, probably sharing, sharing ideas. Cause I think Hingham could learn a lot from us in a lot of ways too.
Yeah, we always- Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I, I think it's, um, you know, it's, it's training ideas and, and the models aren't the same.
Yeah.
You know, there, there are more supports built in in various areas in Hingham that have been built on for years.
Well, it does take time, yeah.
And, and Hingham isn't, you know, Hingham isn't the only school that's doing, uh, school system is doing things well. Or other schools. So, I mean, it's something we look at.
Right. Right.
And, you know, and I have in, in defense, I've shown trends throughout the years I've been here.
Yeah, yeah.
And our trends haven't always dipped lower than the schools that are in our DART. Our, our scores have been, um, at or higher than them in many, in, in many places.
Yeah, yeah.
And you can look back at the presentations I did and the benchmarking I did to show that.
Yeah. Yeah.
We didn't do that this year.
Right, I didn't do that.
We didn't, we didn't look at our DART schools. We looked at schools around us.
But I can. Yeah.
Growth has always been an issue since I've been here. Um, and we're gonna really do some, um, marked work to change that. But I don't wanna, uh, make it sound like this is the year that everything fell out.
Oh gosh, no, 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 no.
Because it didn't. And, and we're, and, you know, it's, I, I would say the work that's been going on with Dr. Collins, uh, the principals, the data analysis, uh, the work we're doing with our math, um, the work we're continuing with our reading specialists, um, is groundbreaking work for Cohasset. And, and I believe in, and you know, those, those schools of distinction, Dr. Collins have one of them. She had one of the sixty-five schools of distinction
Wow.
um, last year. So she has a very good formula for, uh, how to help with these scores. And, um, and, you know, I think there's good things coming.
Ben, Ben, can we get a turn? Cause I, I, I just, I, Miss Ben sort of ignited something in me that I wanted to, I initially waived my right to ask questions.
Sure, sure.
No, no, you never wait for a task.
I, I view this as a, as a circle.
No, we can always circle, we always circle back, no problem.
Um, I, I just, I just wanna point out, so, to, 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 to be clear, I'm not a believer in standardized tests at, at all.
Yeah.
And, um, and I think that you sort of, uh, I, I think, um, alluded to a point that I'm gonna make. And, uh, that is that, so MCAS, uh, there's something that you can't avoid. There's something that it's like the US News and World Report have called, you know, you can't avoid it, right? So they're worried about rankings, things like that. And that, and that's all well and good. And frankly, if someone wants to live in Hingham over Cohasset because they have better MCAS scores, if they do, if they even do, I don't know, then they're welcome to it.
Right, right.
And, uh, and that's great. And, 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 you know, I wish them all the best of luck in that. And, um, that's fine with me. But I would say, and, and, and I just feel very strongly about this because I would be worried that if someone was watching this, they would perhaps walk away with, and I'm not an educator, so I, I, um, please, um, Mr. Madden, please don't take this as, I, I understand why you have the concerns you have. I am not an educator. I, I am just someone that, that personally didn't do well on standardized tests growing up. So maybe this is a subconscious rationalization of my own performance or, or lack of achievement. But, but I will say that, to me, the better gauge of, the better gauge of student achievement is sitting here and watching Margaret Curley present to a roomful of adults, like she's a thirty-five-year-old MBA. Or watching a fifth grader who, um, established a Lego club, um, present to a school committee, um, like he's the CEO of a tech company. Or watching a large number of, uh, high school seniors receive recognition for their amazing performance, including, um, one of our own principal's, um, child, um, for their amazing achievement in their AP scores. And, um, and, and the amount of, uh, amazing college, collegiate achievements that, that they go on to, to make. And, and, and I'm sure professional ones that we don't have data on. But I am s- I am, I am absolutely completely confident that we, that, that, and all the Cohasset graduates that are my age that I know are not only very professionally successful, but also amazing people. So, um, I just wanna make clear that my position is that regardless of whatever these, uh, MCAS scores say or don't say, I am a true believer that they frankly, um, test your ability to take that test. And, um, I am, um, I am very impressed with our students on a daily basis. I am shocked with, um, I mean, you know, the, the, it's just, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm constantly surprised and impressed by, by the caliber of our students, especially, um, our high school students. Um, and that's because they have the most informal education by the time they get there. But I just wanna make clear for anyone that's, that's watching this, and I don't know that anyone is at nine-thirty at night, but I would be concerned that they might be walking away from this, like, with a, with a really red flag and being like, oh my God, like, you know, we, we, it sounds like we're not really not doing well. Um, the kids are, um, are, are very impressive in our district, to the point where I, I, I watched them at the Safe Schools Committee, um, or, or Safe Schools Night. A bunch of student presenters, um, presented, uh, uh, better than most of the adults. Um, I'm, 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 I'm an attorney. I, I speak probably for a living. And, um, and, and I, I, some of them did just as well, but better than me. So, um, I, uh, I just wanted to make that clear. And, and it was just, I'm sorry, you just ignited this, this, this hatred of standardized tests in me. And I just wanted to make it clear that, that, um, that's how I feel. So thank you everyone for listening.
And it's, it's one indicator. I agree, oh, I'm sorry, I need to thank you all. But it is, it's one indicator.
It's one, yeah.
There's a multitude of things that we look at to see that our students are succeeding and looking at where is that we can intervene to make sure that they are successful. So, yeah, I, you know, it's one. So I, I don't wanna give it so much weight, but, but it is an indicator, so we have it.
Sure, yeah.
So, you wanna look at it.
And it is, and it is data that we have.
Sure.
So we might as well use the data.
Yeah, and, and I wanna be clear, I, I, that's, you're doing your, what you should do. You know, you're, you're looking at things and making commentary on something that you see the school needing to work on. Um, I guess I just wanna give you the confidence in a couple of things. One is that I have been blind to that data since I've been here. Um, that we're looking at it more closely from an MCAS perspective. We're also working to, to Craig's point, we're working to, uh, help the whole child. And there's so much going on in this district that's positive right now, that is, um, developing that look at the whole child. And so I just, just wanna make sure that, um, your very good points about the data that's in front of you are being heard in a way that, that is understood to be, um, a piece that we need to look at, but not the whole, um, pot of fish.
Well, I think that my, um, so I'm going to defend my-
Don't defend, I'm just saying, I was, it's actually a compliment to you, thanking me.
I, 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 I feel that I need to defend myself.
Oh, sorry.
Um, you know, when we're talking about the social and emotional well-being of children, whether they can read proficiently matters.
Okay.
And so, I feel very deeply committed to try to do our best to reach every student in this district so that they never feel anxiety about completing the massive amounts of content that they run into in middle school and high school. And we can do a lot so that we can actually reduce anxiety and improve social and emotional well-being. It's not about the scores. The scores paint and tell a story. And we need to look at this story and say, what are we doing to ensure that each student in this district is getting the instruction that they need? Because if that happens, everybody does well.
Yeah, I agree.
From the, the, all across the board.
No, I agree, five percent.
So, we have this data, we should use it to improve
Uh, so is that for?
the social and emotional well-being and the academic lives of these students. It will matter to them.
I, I couldn't be more, I was just trying to provide a little bit of context. Cause I think, I think these, uh, data points do need context. Cause data can be, can be placed in different areas to, to tell a different story. Um, but I, I think what you're saying is, um, very well taken. And, um, we'll continue that.
And I was impressed with you, you bring about a point. I would, I was just worried, like, if someone like me was watching this, I'd be like, whoa, there's, like, all those points that you're making. Uh, I would just ra- raise alarm. And that's all, I was just trying to clarify that I think that, that we're doing a lot of good things in a lot of areas. But I, I, I'm, you should, as, as Dr. Sullivan said, you should be bringing this up. I mean, you know all about this. And it's important that you're part of the school committee. I, I don't know as much about this as you do, but I just, that's all I was bringing up. I wasn't trying to attack, but anyway.
We can perform better, but I do also wanna say, I, I believe our students are reading proficiently. And, and I, I, I wanna say that. I, I've seen the hard work our teachers are doing. I see the hard work our reading specialists are doing. So, I also felt I need to clarify that.
Yeah.
We're doing, um, a better than proficient job in preparing our students to read. Um, and if the MCAS scores aren't showing that, we'll work on that.
And we will.
Make sure that happens. But I also, I, I have to support the s- the teachers in that because it's bottom of my hole.
But this is not me, not-
If I, if I could, I'm very briefly. Um, what I'm hearing is that we are, we are really all on the same page.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I wanna, I wanna thank Jen because I am not the one that's gonna pour over the last few years of the past decade.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
Like, I'm so, I can't tell you how grateful I am that you brought up all of the things that you just brought up. Like, truly profoundly grateful. Because I too, you know, moved here with an idea of what the schools were, specifically in comparison to other places. And have sort of, you know, that's why I'm here, right? Cause I don't believe in, like, just sitting in a corner and, you know, making assumptions and complaining. So, here I am, right? But what I'm hearing is that there have been a number of years up to this new leadership team.
Mm-hmm.
And I, and I think it's important for us to, to sort of point out where there is areas where there's a lot of room for improvement. And I, and I do echo Jen's sentiment. I think, I don't know, I, I also am clearly very new to this. But I, it's, I wonder, I mean, how much does Student Services have to do with what you're, I wasn't able to make Mary's meeting, the meeting where Mary was here. But, like, when you talk about interventions.
So the most vulnerable students
Yeah.
are those that are not on IEPs.
Right, okay.
They're, they are vulnerable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we wanna make sure-
Yeah, so I hear you. Like, I have, I have one of those, right?
RTI has a gentleman.
Like, I talked about the math thing last time. And I, I have a student who's like totally right here.
Right.
And she was like beside herself because she thought she was terrible at math for a little bit. But thanks to some of my colleagues' encouragement, I've addressed it in appropriate channels. And we're doing really well. And I, and I just feel like part of our jobs is to help parents understand the ways that they can sort of ask questions of the right people, but also advocate for the parents that don't know what they're supposed to do. So I feel like that's what Mrs. Madden is doing. And I feel like, I agree, Craig, like, standardized tests are just one, as, as Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Collins have said, just one indicator. But they're, they're a meaningful indicator for a lot of reasons. And, you know, being married to a real estate broker, I understand why Alan's conversation with a Realtor is concerning, cause that determines property values to a certain extent. And then that determines in- income tax and real estate tax and whatever. So, I think we're all on the same page.
I, yeah, I think-
And I, and I would like to see us sort of- And I and I would like to see us sort of move forward, understanding that and keeping Jen's points at the fore so that we can address them, yeah.
Sure. Do you have anything, Paul?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I got two things. First of all, I agree with I I everything is in a test.
Okay.
However, can we go to the slide for math fifth? And now is this last year's fifth grade class?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so s- yeah, so last year's fifth now, for me, math is simple. It's numbers.
That one?
I mean, it doesn't, you know, it it at the end of the day, it's a number, and you either get it right or you get it wrong.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Right.
And the idea that our fifth grade math is fifty six percent, and the seventh sixth grade math is seventy five percent. You can go to the sixth grade math.
Oh, you're a sixth.
Why is there such a difference in one year? That's so mind-boggling, that it's.
Yeah. That's one of the nice things when you look at that at data, and that was what was happening with the data teams when we were looking at grade levels and content areas. We were looking at some of those things and the trends and patterns and looking at some of the item analysis and saying, huh, why is that and what happened?
So would you suggest that we get maybe a more of a ma- dig more into the between those two grades?
So.
I mean, like, that's concerning to me, cause I bring that up. My 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 child did well in math and
Right, right.
and however, like, I would be puzzled to know that the kids in his class aren't exceeding expectation.
Yeah. Right.
And I'm thinking, do we t- you know, get a maths specialist for that grade or, you know, what what can we do?
So it's.
Or and and the other the other thing I'd like to add in too.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Because um our district isn't really um kinda with the times, and we took that today when we did a um we did a tour of all the schools, we found that, you know, a lot of the classrooms are kinda like outdated and not specifically up to s- code. Like, you look at Hingham, and Hingham's middle school is, you know, they get the smart boards, they get the they get all the the all the tools
Sure.
in their toolbox to get there. Or do are we specifically not funded enough to get out the tool or to have enough tools, not only in in human capital, as we just spoke about, but technologically, um are we are we kinda missing the boat because we don't have all these like classrooms with 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 the high techs in them? Do you think? Cause Marshfield is, you see Marshfield weakness, and and they got they got all brand new schools.
That's a great. What? Well, the high school's brand new.
Yeah.
It's really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just bare up.
Yeah, yeah. But but the other schools were all too. I mean, there, you know, there's some schools from, you know, nineteen forty two or whatever.
Right, so I don't know if it's but I don't know if it's the buildings or.
But yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, I think that's a great question, and I think certainly as we're moving forward, I mean, we're gonna look at all of those pieces. You know, you have to be careful. You still buy technology just to buy technology, right?
Right, right.
You have to make sure that it's built into a plan so that we know what we're doing and and it's important. But but like, how do we how do we make sure that it's part of, you know, the integration piece of it all?
Right.
Um for the math, I'll give you just a quick example, cause I know it's getting me too. Um when we were looking at the fifth grade math and we were looking at the item analysis and you're looking at the standards, and we're kinda looking, there was this large red block. Um and when it's red, it says that we're below the state, right, in those particular areas. So, you know, the teachers were having all sorts of conversations and talking about everything, and then I said, okay, I'm gonna show you this piece of paper. It's got a lot of red on it. I want you to just take a breath. Let's just look at it as scientists. Let's look at it. Um and it fell with um measurement and data. That's where the chunk was. And the teacher said, oh, my goodness, we get to it, but because of the time of the test and where it comes in the year, they cram it in right there to get it. They go back and do it. But in that particular section, like, they knew right away that that was what happened. So then it gets us, it spawns a conversation, right? Okay, so now what are we gonna do differently? What do you think we can do so that we make sure that all of those pieces are getting done? So that was, you know, kind of a little snippet of what some of the conversations we had. It ties into the fact that we're looking at our new math and that we're going to be taking on a new math program for next year. So and those are this this information from just those um times that we had together and the uh conversations we're having in the future are really getting teachers thinking about, what is it? What programs are we going to use? How does the programs that we're piloting line up? We have rubrics that we're looking at, but also all of this information that they have in their heads right now because of the conversations we're having, really, really rich, and they're really thinking carefully about it. They always did. I know they have some more things to think about that are specific, right? Cause you that point of you talking about RTI, you have to drill down and exactly know what it is that child is doing. Some of they just can't read. What specifically is it? And we have to find it, target it, progress monitor it, and make sure that we're giving those kids what we need. Couldn't agree with you, Margaret. I feel like I really, really, really. So um and I appreciate you asking all those questions. I just knew you have a lot, and when you started to tell me, yes, I was like, well, that's that's another presentation.
That was a lot of us.
So I'm happy, happy to do that, cause like I said, I would love, I'm a big fan of RTI. Um but so I think.
It's a great delivery of a start.
It is. Um and and again, it it does exist here. I do think, you know, that there's ways that we can talk and build upon what's already there to really improve what we're doing and then bring it out across not just for reading, but for math, social, emotional, creative, all those things. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Maybe I'll wait, sorry.
Mark, you have a question, question?
Yeah, oh, I have a couple of comments, if that's okay. Mark, so thank you, Susan, sure. Um first off, um I wanna commend Leslie. Thanks for your uh presentation. This was not your district last year. You came from Marshfield. Marshfield is one of the districts on the South Shore that has some of the best improvement. Um Cohasset, I think, was sort of at the bottom of the middle area. Um so at any rate, um I am not a huge fan of standardized tests either, but um I think in Massachusetts, I'm hoping to cut them down. But at the same time, um I've worked in high-performing districts that crush on the MCAT, the the New Jersey standardized test that I was in. I also think it's really valuable, like a a district like Newark, New Jersey, where kids were doing nothing. Um and you kinda need that to to make sure people are doing something. I think that's why they were introduced, because too many districts were completely doing absolutely nothing, and students were getting no education graduating without being able to read and could get away with it. Um we do have many great students in this district. Um Craig, you highlighted some. Those are the cream of the crop, kind of pulled to stand in front of the school committee. Um I've spent a lot of time listening to a lot of people in the districts whose kids are really struggling. Um there was uh even a course put in in the sixth grade a few years ago, because so many kids were coming out of elementary schools uh without proper foundation in reading and actually couldn't go into a sixth grade curriculum. This is all really important for you guys to know, if you go out there with them. I've been listening to um complaints about reading uh for since my childhood in the district. Um it's been an issue. Uh the good news is that the school committee and the administration are really responsive. Um there's more phonics-based curriculum going on in the elementary schools. Um there's a great article in the New York Times, in case you missed it, about what Mississippi have been doing in their uh literacy programs. They have the greatest improvement in the nation in their reading indicators, and it's because they brought more phonics-based program back into the schools. I would really highly encourage you guys to read about this type of thing and what's happening in education. It's your main responsibility um is to make sure our students are having academic success. Um so I'm hoping that our MCAS and other scores are going up. Um as we come down the pike, I think, which my children were entering the Ozzy now, so they got some of these um foundations and more phonics-based curriculum. I think it's gonna benefit their students. Hopefully, you'll see scores go up in the coming years as these children who are gonna hit third grade have all of this instruction. Um I also think that, yes, the MCAS is one test. There's other indicators which are not usually made public to you guys. I took the time to dig into this. I would encourage you to do so um as you can. But for instance, the Stanford World Sat Test, um Cohasset students are not performing very well. They're in some of the lowest standards when compared to similar districts with socio-chemical backgrounds. That's not a good indicator either. Um they're coming in with some pretty, they were coming into the Duke Hill, for instance, with some pretty significant weaknesses, again, in phonics. It's just whether you like standardized tests or not, that's a couple of indicators that are giving us some useful data. And again, commend the district for making some adaptations to address some of these things. We made a bad online revision that didn't look out so well. Again, the district is responding and changing. Another good sign, don't just think that, well, geez, well, they'll be fine. Um we do have something about it. We shouldn't be sitting here looking at our indicators and going, but we're really successful and we're great. You 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 gotta respond. You can't sit here and just rest on your laurels. I come from an athletics background. I didn't just say like, well, I did my workout. I deserve to be on the national team. No, you're gonna get your head cut off if you don't keep striving. So I I we should be striving. That's what you're here for. Um Jen's comments on RTI, great for in NASS and in that process, I would say, as a district. Um every administrator who came in has been on, I think, most of the interview committees for the both elementary principals and middle school principal. The amount of discussion, um it's a main thing that principals were proud of, is the progress on RTI and the interventions they were doing in their schools, which was bringing more success. So I think it's really important to understand RTI, what it is exactly. Um you know, we're in the process of having an RTI model. We've made time for it and scheduled that step one. Step two is making, understanding who's your personnel doing it. And then step three, which I think we're starting to work on now, which I imagine Leslie's starting to work on, and like, what are what are the measure of rituals you are using? I think that's kind of where we are in the process right now. Um so that's important. Also, on standardized tests, that do you know what the number one indicator of how someone's gonna do? How do you know if someone's gonna do well in a standardized test? The number one indicator of this is if someone's gonna do well or not well.
Whether they can read.
Well, family and home. So we're in the town of Cohasset, it's a very wealthy town. Uh so you would expect that a student is going to perform well. So while, again, whatever, maybe you like, maybe you don't like to like tests, we should be doing we should be performing as our peer districts are performing in terms of probably income, it's something I would look at. Like, if we're doing worse every year, you get you gotta kinda, again, have, okay, I don't like standardized tests, but you gotta ask yourself like, well, we probably shouldn't be doing worse every single year, which I'm not saying we are, but I think you need to look at this data. So I like compared us to Hingham. Um there's some pretty significant differences. Uh I compared us to her, a little more similar, but again, they're a little ahead of us. But you can pull up data um to look at some of these comparisons. Um we shouldn't, I don't think we should be quite as close to the state average as we are right now. Again, I think we made progress, but there's a lot to be done. And I really, really think, as a school committee member, that all of you should be going through this data. Maybe not as much as Jen is, but I mean, you can even look at some other districts, like last year Norwell. Norwell had handed out a presentation that their assistant superintendent did, so I didn't have to do as much work. Um but it did a lot of uh comparisons between districts. I think you should understand, be aware of that, take into that a bit. Um as my elected representatives for my school, so I would expect that. Um finally, um I mean, I I just went in and did some comparisons with Hingham for the highest performing. They're outperforming us uh ten percent to twenty percent on a lot of the high high achieving ones. Um which they've done a they've put forth a ton of work into their RTO model and um to s- some of their instructional models. But um I think we should be looking at that, seeing what we can do. Um and I think that's, we should be focusing on um as you make your budget decisions, looking into this. As a school council member on the middle school, I'm hearing the same thing, that this is probably going to be a priority um of where to put your money to to back up some of this stuff. Um so I think that kind of summarizes some of my stuff. I really think, oh, my final thing was just going to be that we looked at growth percentages for the uh beating and exceeding expectations. That's ignoring thirty to forty percent of our students on most of those growth percentages. So I think we need to know what the growth percentages look like for everybody, and I just don't have to.
We do have sound.
Were those growth percentages for everybody or were they just to that beating and exceeding?
Those were for, I think those were for everybody, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you were said you would said they were for everybody. It's for everybody.
Those were totals. Those were for everybody.
They were for.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
So the student growth percentages are everyone.
Yeah.
So she was just showing the um, she was just showing the percentage of beating and exceeding.
Okay. Okay.
And then a second measure was what was our overall growth.
Oh, okay.
And you can get that all, and you know that, it's all.
You can, it's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's probably accessible.
Right. So, um to to wr- to wrap this up, okay, cause I have a couple of thoughts. I I'd like that we have a plan with Leslie and Jen to kinda work on an RTI presentation, cause I think it's important for all of us to really understand it, where we are and where you would like it to go. That's number one.
Sure.
Number two is, and and forgive me for saying this, but we have had, in my four years on the committee, you're my third superintendent, you're my fourth assistant superintendent, you're my fourth business manager. And with such turnover in leadership, I think it's hard to sustain um systematic, progressive programs of improvement.
I agree.
So I I'm not I'm not saying the instability in the last four years is a direct cause of the results. It it could be, but I have great hope and faith by what you've stated already, Dr. Sullivan, and what you've already accomplished, Dr. Scollins, in terms of where we're going with the changes in the math program you've already identified with the conversations about RTI. And I think stability is a very important factor in achieving the academic growth for all of our students. And I don't want y- you know, the the changeover that we've had to be the excuse for it, but I think it's a factor in it. And that's just my personal opinion on that.
I would agree. I mean, I was at my previous school for nine years, right? So you have that time to build. It didn't happen overnight, right? You know, so it's, so, you know, it takes it takes time.
It it takes it takes time.
You know, we s- we saw it in a couple of year, within a couple of years, we could see it. Um but then, you know, obviously.
Yeah. Okay. So thank you to the everyone on the committee. I appreciate everybody's perspective and can we?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I say just one last thing?
Okay, but we we gotta we gotta move on.
I mean, really, I do. I do. I just I just wanna emphasize, like, I agree. I think there's been incredible progress. I think we have incredible people right now. But I think it's really important to have a very honest discussion of what the scores this year look like. It's not that we didn't, but I think everyone needs to be very aware of what they, that's all.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be best.
All right. Shrek's all on here. You know, it's seven one o'clock in the morning, I would think.
Yep, breakfast, sir.
Um. We will now move to.
Okay. The approval of the warrant.
Move of the law.
The approval of the warrant, okay. Um I don't know where it is at this moment. Okay, may I have a motion to approve warrant twenty dash eleven S?
I have a question for Mr. Villalobos first.
Okay.
Very quickly. Um seems to be like heavier than it usually is. Is there some reason, cause it's the end of the year, something like that? It seems like there's a lot more fit, like larger expenses on it.
Could be the end of the quarter.
And it seems like, and I feel like there's there's like, I see like repeat, like, for example, long GPA, long GPA draw, like the some of those bills, that seems to be like a repeat of things we've already pre-approved that are on there being added to it.
Well, that till the one, there was an issue with there the, you know, it said has an invoice in a while, so we got a whole bunch of invoices all at once.
That those are the invoices from the beginning of um the fiscal year.
Right.
They they there was a there was a billing staff who
Yeah. Yeah.
in terms of it, they changed over, the billing clerk had changed over the email, so we had not been received, we hadn't, there wasn't a single invoice from them all all year, so this is the whole from the beginning of year. That's what it's.
So that that's for them. Otherwise, nothing particular, in particular, you think that the, how you mean? I mean, I mean, is it end of the quarter, so maybe we'll go quarterly and monthly.
Okay.
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 Anything else?
Yeah, sorry, I'll look at, I'll look, I'll look at it, Craig, and see if there's anything else like usual there, but.
No.
All right, um so may I have a motion to approve warrant twenty dash eleven S? I'm so moved. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, roll call, please.
Nay, Paul Kearney.
Hi, Ashley Leary. Um. Hi, Ellen Mark.
Hi, Jen Madden.
Hi, Craig McCall.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. She left you in the corner?
I'm calling. The gift first.
Thank you.
The gift is first.
Sir.
The gift is first on end.
Oh.
I have a sixty nine thousand seventy nine dollars.
All right, so there's the PSO here?
Yeah, so the PSO have donated sixty nine thousand seven hundred and thirty nine dollars for a big Cohasset, and then a playground, Joseph Lawrence, which is still. So that will be combined with money we also received in the community, that we paid for a new playground.
And so these funds combined with those funds, it's a hundred percent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just but there's a it's gonna do a hundred percent. Just about, there's a, it's gonna do a hundred percent, there's one e- one more piece we want to do for the, another, a little bit better technology, that will actually apply it, keep back to CPC, you can ask for those funds.
Okay. All right.
But that'll get, but that's a, that's will get us a full playground in this, so.
Well, will that happen?
In this break. It's our decision.
Yeah.
But the, when they were using is our decision.
So if you go, if you go into the OSGA, there's renderings of what this is gonna look like, it looks great. All right, so can I have a motion to approve the very generous gift from the PSO for sixty nine thousand seven hundred and thirty nine dollars for the new playground at Joseph Oswood School?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, roll call?
Aye, Paul Kearney.
Aye, Ashley Leary.
Aye, Ellen Mark.
Aye, Jen Madden.
Aye, Craig McCall.
Thank you.
Just like to make a comment, we're so lucky to have the PSO, we do have just such a great group.
It's very good.
Oh, and also give us a, we're generous.
Yeah. To the information. All right, shall I do my, so this is the, so this is the first pass of the question for next year.
Really?
So, I, you've got an updated copy of this in your papers. There's also a copy of some other slides we presented at the fiscal forum last week. So, and thankfully, they both start with the first, same first page, so I apologize for that. But the second, the one we're gonna look at, is this nice, uh, seals.
Yeah.
Uh, so the other, the other presentation pack was presented to the fiscal forum last week, and it's a lot of background and trend information, so that's why we put it in your papers for your information. So, this is the, you know, this is really kind of, this first major presentation, but I did a lot more work to go into this, so I'm sure you're gonna have a lot of questions. And they will be answered in due, well, hopefully they'll be answered either tonight or in the process ahead. Certainly at the white budget workshop, we have planned for the sixth of January, where we will have an opportunity to hear from the principals.
And that's an afternoon, correct?
It's like three to five, four to six, I think, so.
Yeah.
Is everybody, uh, welcome to that, or just?
Yes.
This is an open meeting.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna post it as a school committee meeting.
School. Okay, great. And that'll be there?
So that is, it's four to six on Monday, January the sixth.
Yep, having a little reminder.
So that'll be a great opportunity, they'll be here, and that'll be an opportunity here from the principals of the OSGA. All right. And so, given this is the first presentation on the budget, I thought it might be helpful just to give an outline of some of how the process works. And also, not just the school side, but the town side, so how the town comes up with the money that is eventually voted to us for the budget. So, there's a bit of a balancing that goes on. So, the town side is, the town side is how these, how much money is available, the other revenue and costs that the town side has. And through that process, they come up with a budget figure. Meanwhile, we go through and see what services we need, and they want additional, what their level services, what additional requirements we have, and other budget priorities. And the aim is so that the amount of money the town has is the amount of money that we need to meet our, and that kind of process we're going through right now. And just I thought it might be helpful to go through a lot more detail of how the town side works, 'cause that does obviously influence how much money we get to get into the process. So really simply, how the town works is it starts with a budget, which is essentially our budget, the town's budget for the town departments, and shared costs. I'm gonna go into a bit more detail, but it includes things like health insurance, overhead costs, and all of other things. Then looking to head, looking ahead to FY twenty one budget, the town accountant looks at how much new revenue they think they're gonna have, and how, minus how much more shared costs there's gonna be, so like an increase in health insurance. And that net growth, which is the revenue min- the increased revenue minus the increased costs, is how much more money we have. And there's a town process, procedural agreement whereby of that net growth, we get sixty one percent and the town gets thirty nine percent. So, so there's not, so, you know, the other districts, so my previous district, they didn't have this process in place, so there's a lot of kind of negotiation and important discussion and treatment about how, what portion of that net growth would be distributed. But here, because they have this, we have this agreement in place, it's in theory a much more straightforward process where we just, that's what we get, if that's net growth is calculated, the target's sixty one percent for the schools. So, there are a lot of assumptions that go into determining what this net growth is, because they've gotta determine what the revenue will be next year, what the cost will gonna be, we don't know all those yet. So the town accountant's trying to work those out now, they're trying to look at what information he has to, to calculate that. I would say the goal each year the town has is for the s- for the schools and town budget to increase by three percent. So when you keep that number in your head, 'cause three percent is where we should, you know, that's, that's the, that's the minimum they want to set an increase. So last year we got four percent, but from what I understand, this year they expect it to be more like three percent. So that's a three percent increase in our FY twenty budget, according to FY twenty. So, the red, this is all town side still, so the town's revenue is primarily driven to property taxes, so that's the largest source of revenue, that's eighty three percent of the town's revenue. So that's a hu- that's a big portion compared to some other districts, some other towns. And it means that our, the growth is really limited to the properties in the town. So unless there's new property, or our property, existing property is improved, so the value goes up, just kind of, it's, it's difficult for the town to grow too much. Kind of what this linked to the two and a half percent increase, which is how much they're allowed to increase in property taxes, plus new growth. So I don't have the up-to-date figures on all this yet, so I'm just showing you some of the previous, last year's figures, and we'll get the new figures from the town accountant shortly. So it's, there's property taxes, there's other local receipts, that's all the other fees and taxes that are issued, and they're very low growth here. But, and that's eight percent of the total revenue. And then the other area of the re- of the town's revenue is from the state aid, but, and this, this works out about, about, like, just about ten percent, just like nine percent of the town's aid comes from the state. So the biggest chunk of that is this big blue line here, which is chapter seventy, which is what the state gives to districts for their education. And that's calculated based on the foundation budget, which is how much the town, how much the state thinks your, the district needs to provide an adequate level of education. So they calculate this foundation budget, and then you look at how much property wealth there is, and a number of other things that the town, and they calculate how much should be paid for by the state, and how much should be paid for by the district. And this is how much they think should be paid for by the state. So that's about, so last year that was, say, just two point seven. So, and as you'll see, so this is that, this is the Cohasset state funding department. So what this is, is this is millions on this axis, and then this blue line, so we've got each year, and this blue line is that foundation budget. So that's how much the state thinks we need to provide an adequate level of education for Cohasset students. And this orange square down here, that's the chapter seventy funding, so that's how much the state contributes towards our foundation budget. So that's a pretty small portion of that. Other districts, now it really comes down to, you know, relative wealth of the district, eh, and a couple of other things, but really, you can see, you know, some other districts, that, that orange line is much bigger. But it just means that we are much more reliant on local taxes and local revenue than some other districts. Another thing just to note from this is that, so that's how much the state thinks we need to spend. This dark blue line is actually how much we are spending. Part of the reason for that is that the state's formula for how they calculate this is really out of date, and it doesn't really account for special ed costs or a health insurance cost, those are the two big factors. So the state has brought in a new, the, just, the governor just signed the Werthansgiving Student Opportunity Act, which is gonna recalculate how much money is required for foundation budget. And I'm just taking it, so, just a quick aside to mention that, which is, and this is all about revenue, 'cause this is all about how much money the town's gonna have. And you might hear talk of the Student Opportunity Act, so the state has pumped in one point four billion dollars into the student, into education funding for the state. However, it's gonna be phased in over seven years, we'll see all that next year. And it's gonna focus on, at least initially, a lot of, primarily it's gonna focus on low-income districts and low-income students. So that's not gonna be huge impact on us. There is some extra money for special education, through the circuit breaker, which is a funding for special education. And that will impact us a bit, but I think it's gonna, it's gonna be over a few years, so we're not gonna see a big immediate impact of that. So it's, I'm, so I'm just trying to give you a sense of where the funding's going and why we're gonna be in the position we're in. Basically, so, 'cause you might, and I just wanted to phrase this, because you might hear people say, but I thought the state just signed off on one point four billion dollars more in education funding. All it did, but it's over seven years, and it's focused in low income. And there might be someone specialized, but that's a little bit further than I want to. And I think we could tell this in more detail in some other part of the, I just wanted to give you that sense. Okay, so, so the state gives us fun- identifies how much funding it's gonna give us, but before, gives us that money, it assesses the costs out of those fund, that funding for us. Does that make sense? So they say they're gonna give us so much money, but they say at first you're gonna pay for some services the state provides to you, and that those are the stage assessments. And I, this is, I just wanted to highlight this game, 'cause this also might come up in further discussions, one of the big changes, so this is, these are all the different assessments the state makes against our funding, and this is over the years how it's changed. And as you can see, we read a big jump from nineteen to twenty. And that was because of charter school tuition, so our charter school tuition really increased last year. However, how that number is generated isn't going, because what happens is, the state just contacts the charter schools and asks them, this is when the state's doing the budget, we, the start of like, in the previous year, when it's working out the budget. The state contacts the charter schools and says, how many students do you think you're gonna hire from Cohasset? And the charter schools give them a number, and that's what they use to set the budget. So last year, when they asked a, a local charter school, he said they were gonna get five or six more Cohasset students, and that's why our assessment went up. In reality, they didn't get that many more students. So this should, so when, this should come down this year during this actual funding. But it just creates this problem for this town accountant, because when the state gives you a sort of budget, they seem to pick a set in. But then down, when the actual reality, we actually didn't, so current numbers from the state is, our numbers didn't go up at all, so it should still be back of two thousand nineteen. So that's gonna be one of the discussions we're gonna have with the town accountant and state about how we properly take this into consideration.
Because you have to plan for it, 'cause we vote our budget in in March, as, and the town does before the end of the fiscal year, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and you. Exactly. Before you know the actual numbers. And it's not, I mean, I mean, it's a lot of money, it's not a huge percentage of our budget, you know, 'cause, so that's like a hundred and eighty forty fifty dollars, which in the great scheme of things is not a lot of money. But when it, we're talking just out of the net growth, that we're talking about actually can have a big impact on how much available additional funding is.
That's two teachers.
All right, so charter school tuition, that's just something that might come up, and it's something that we might hear from the ti- 'cause that's why you're from the town, when I'm coming, I'm gonna see the town, and they say, oh, but you know, part of the problem we have is charter school tuition's gonna up. But that's, it's, but it's gonna come down, and so we're gonna have to do that. All right. So, back at the balance, the different ways the town makes up, it comes to the figure that makes up our budget, we have all that revenue, but also they have transferred to other funds. So, before they work out how much money comes to the school, they also give money to other funds, like capital stabilization and, and other capital funds, parent stabilization fund and oped, which, in theory and in reality, then the schools have it. It just doesn't, it's going, it's taken out of the available funds before they calculate the budget.
Mike, but isn't that what we voted on at special town meeting? It's the free cash from the end of the year gets allocated to the funds at special town meeting.
So, yes, some of that is, yeah.
So it, so it doesn't roll into the next fiscal year budget?
Yes, some of that is, some of this actually comes out before, this comes out of the operating budget, and also, not the operating budget, but available funds.
Right, right, they have allocations anyways, and then they supplement them with free cash, yeah.
Yes. Exactly, yeah.
Sure.
And then there's the shared budgets, so the, the more, so these are costs which are both benefit both the town and out of the school. And the biggest of these by far are the, the health insurance, which is five million, over five million, and then also pensions, which is about two million. And these are, so as you can see, pensions were increasing a lot and have leveled off over the last couple of years, and likewise with health insurance. And the town accountant's now come to try and work out where it's gonna go next. Things is probably not gonna increase a lot, but, but there's always that possibility in health insurance. So, all that is.
So does everyone understa- I just wanna make sure everyone understands, that the town pays for our employee health insurance.
Yeah. Yes.
It doesn't come out of our budget.
Mm-hmm.
And then the Norfolk County pension is the municipal's pension plant, not the MTA.
Yeah. Yeah.
For the, for the teachers.
Absolutely. But we have, so it's municipal, but includes some of our staff, so anyway, it's not any teachers, okay?
Right, right.
So, it's all the, the service workers, anyone.
Even if they have a different year, anybody that's not the MTA.
Yeah, so. So this, so now, so right now, I'm talking, so this is how the state, so state, the town rather goes through all these processes to come up with a budget. And that's how they come up with that three percent, or how they're trying to come up with that two percent. Meanwhile, over the school side, we're looking at what we actually need to keep going and keep producing education that we are, we wish to. So there's three components, I'm gonna go through to this, right? So there's a level service budget, which just assumes we continue to provide the same level of service that we are providing now. Surely it's taking all our existing staff, and just giving them their contractual increases. And then any addition, you know, then just looking at like supplies, contracted services, assuming that they will stay probably the same, utilities, all those kind of things. I just look at the trends and see where they're going, and that's how I come up with the number. And then also, in fact, then, then rev- offset and revolving funds, that's like athletics and kindergarten, and also the grants, and making assumption what grants. So additional benefit and additional requirements, this is kind of a subset of level service, but this is where we need to provide the same level of service, but it's gonna require some additional qua- additional ser- additional resources to do that. For example, a level of service we have is we meet all the IEPs, so special education IEPs. If we meet those, if, for example, we need to add an I- a, an ESP, that's a, you know, an educational sports freshman, in order to meet an IEP, that's an additional requirement, but it's still we put in the, kind of, we have to provide it, so it's a new staff, and a, but it's kind of still the same level of service. So for example, like staff due to IEPs or to full name changes. So we're still providing all the same level of service, it's just a makeup of the students who provide that service, two of us changed a little bit. And then budget priorities, so those are additional positions or resources that are required to meet the district's budget. So this is the thing, so pretend that principals would like to do it in order to change their highest service work for them. In this presentation, I'm gonna focus on these ones, and then when you come in on January sixth, the principals will talk more about this stuff. So the level service budget, so, I'm gonna go through all this in a bit more detail, but basically, these are the, these are the major accounts, which we present, the summary to you every month, that's why I use those to, so you might suddenly add with them. And this is the first pass budget we have, and what like the current change, and overall, this is looking at, um, like a three point two percent increase, this is. I've also put in the FTEs here, and this includes, so that's actually, that's actually what it should be two hundred and fifty seven, and it actually rounded it, so the difference is one and a half across. And the difference is, we had, and we need one, we've added an ESP this year, and that's in relationship to, um, uh, 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 IEP that we had to meet, and we added the half-time middle school nurse. Now, there were some other changes that went on within those numbers, but that's the net effect. So I have included the UMAC curriculum, which is a big ticket item, but really, and we can come back to see where that should have been a budget priority, but I've included that, because I don't really see anywhere it was moving forward without doing that, getting a pilot in it this year, and we really didn't accomplish it. It also includes some middle school administration changes we did, eh, and an increase in circuit breaker funding, which I'll talk about more in a couple of slides. All right, so these are the trends. So these, these are each of those, uh, categories, and I'm gonna, you know, go through the one at times, so that it's a bit clearer. So I just wanna give you, so, in terms of what to take away from this, 'cause I know you're tired, and I think this is a lot of detail, but I just wanna give you a sense of what's driving the budget. So. Yes, 'cause I'm gonna do each one of these, I'll do them quickly, and it should just give you an idea of where we're coming from, so.
Like a love system feature.
Yeah, the Nike joint, I think, you're gonna see a lot.
Wow.
That's, it's, it's athletics, so, there's, there's, you can only just see, but there's actually a modest increase here, that's driven by expected increases in transportation, also some, also. Also some also full time costs or the start time changes, school start time changes. And as and a modest reduction in how much we're relying on revolving accounts, we're gonna talk to them in a second. There's also the uh, yeah, that's all we said. Then cleaning contracts, so this used to be more of an issue for this district, where we outsourced cleaning, or we don't outsource that anymore. So this is actually just cleaning supplies, and this is just what people's, the what the schools requested, and there's actually a slight reduction there. This is contracted services. So actually, a big chunk of the change in contracted services is just a recategorization of expenditure, which used to be classified as other P D. Is now is technically contracted services, so it could have been correct. So you'll see on a a P D, uh rather than other category goes down by almost the same amount. I also have increased the amount available for the legal services next year, because we're going into union negotiations, so it makes sense we're gonna be reducing more legal services. And so this is other, so see how this goes down almost as much as this goes up, that's just 'cause I moved something from here to there. And this is our bus lease, so a bus lease, uh rather, this is our regular education, so that goes pretty much level, because the cost of the bus lease has gone down a bit from what was budgeted last year. And some other costs have gone up, like the salaries have gone up as well, so that's why that's level. So this is special ed transportation, which is pretty much level again. We saw this big increase since then.
Mm.
So it's a special ed tuition, so this is a big chunk, as you've seen from our bills and so on, this is a big part of the budget. It it kind of goes up, right? So part of the reason for this huge jump was that we prepaid a lot of tuition in eighteen, so that showed up in eighteen. Our services were received in nineteen, so that's why nineteen was bigger than. If you level these out, it's more like just a gradual kind of increase from nineteen through to where we are budgeting for next year. And the reason it goes down going into next year is because we're getting more money from the state to help offset these costs. So like last year, and I'll show that, and I'll show you that in a couple of slides. So that, I'll come back to that. And what we can't quite see that, but this one is, this one is uh text materials. And why, we're seeing a big increase there, 'cause we had, we actually was hoping to bring that down, but that big increase is for the new math curriculum, so that's like a hundred thousand dollars. And then utilities, which is here, we're seeing a reduction from that wind, uh no wind farm, from the solar farm we have, which is offsetting our electricity, which is helping bring that down. And then this is salaries, and the salaries is actually on this axis, because it's so much bigger that if you put this on the same axis, these all just pick up tiny little lines at the bottom. So this is on its own axis here, and that's just a gradual increase, and that just really reflects um contract increases, it's all those percentages. And almost sixty percent of this is from teachers. And this would be bigger, except that around almost fifty percent of our teachers are on step sixteen, so they only get the cost of living increase, they don't get column increase, they don't get scheduling ease. Okay, I I realize there's a lot of information, any questions on any of this? Yes.
So within with the um new um Student Opportunities Act.
Yeah.
Will we get some relief on um special education transportation?
Okay, yeah, that's a great question. So so the way, so the way, so there's this fund called Circuit Breaker. And what that is, that's funding the state provides to districts to offset the cost of special ed. A because to the special ed costs, and how we calculate it, is you take all the costs that special education students cost to you. And any amount of that is over four times the average student for the cost for the state, so anything over four times average, you get refunded on. And it can be up to about seventy five percent of those costs. Does that make sense? So you say you say the total cost of students' cost. Anything over four times the average student cost, you get refunded at a percentage, which is normally about seventy five percent. Now, in the past, in order to calculate how much that students' cost, you've only been allowed to look at tuition costs. And in future, you'll be allowed to inc include transportation costs, so that just makes it, that's even higher, so you look at the ops, you know. The cutoff point, you've got more above the cutoff point, and that'll be, that'll be a reimbursed at a percentage, just like this. It's been phased in, so initially you'll only be allowed to include twenty five percent of your transportation costs, then fifty percent, then seventy five, and a hundred percent. And the other fact that we don't know is, so once we've calculated that amount, the amount over the threshold, what percentage is gonna be reimbursed, and we don't know that yet. So it's gonna be a big given take, so they're gonna say, okay, now you've all this much more is reimbursed, but is it now gonna be reimbursed at the same rate, should be great, or a smaller rate, or we don't know.
And the other thing we don't know for special ed transportation is with our new van, how much we might save on contract services for transportation.
Yeah, so I have not included any savings on that yet, so hopefully there will be some.
Yeah.
I but I just assumed, I said, I assumed the extra salary cost, and I assumed the saving on transportation fee exactly that, so it's a little bit.
Exactly, yeah.
So the only thing is, the way we use circuit breaker, so we get circuit breaker, the circuit breaker we receive this year, we spend next year. So if we do get more circuit breaker funding next year, then that'll benefit us is the year after, 'cause we use spending the year after we get. And that just makes our life easier, 'cause when we're budgeting, we know how much we've received, so we're not trying to guess how much we're gonna get. And also gives us a bit of a cushion, because we're running into a problem, 'cause we're just. Okay, which is really nicely leads me on to funds and grants which offset the budget. So essentially how I do this, is I look at all the costs we have for next year, and then I see which of these costs can be paid out of revolving funds or grants. Or, you know, revolving funds or grants, so for example, we work out all our athletic costs, and then we subtract off the amount that's been through the revolver. And likewise, so this is circuit breaker, so last year, circuit breaker, we we were able to budget five hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars, of course, circuit breaker. Next year, rather, this year, next year, it'll be seven hundred and twenty six thousand dollars, so that's obviously big, that's a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars extra. That's why you saw Sped line going down, because we just got this big offset that we'd have last year in consequence of that. There are like, we had, we had increased some of our funding, we had built up a bit of our Z R and a couple of these funds, and we we used it this year because we could. And we're not, I mean, we could, this is the sort of thing, so this is the first pass, we can come back and look at this again as we go through this process. But so we've we've reduced by sixty thousand the amount we're paying using at full day kindergarten, that might, that might be worth relooking at, but I don't know that's what we've done. And so the net impact of this is an extra seventy thousand dollars in funding that helps to reduce the budget. Alright, does that make sense? So there's two things, oh, that's a shame, so these are two additional requirements, which I have not yet included in the budget. And the first is a possible increase to kindergarten, I'm gonna show, 'cause I have an student moment projections, and I'll show you why we think there may have, we may have to add another kindergarten class. And I'm not including it yet, because we're still working that through, but also, if we do increase it, then we'll get more funding through the kindergarten fee, so the full cost of that won't hit the budget. And that's something we need to decide how much to go on budget. Because so say if we get an extra ten, it's quite depends, we have to add a section, but how many students we get, you know, you need to add a section. But you might not get a full section worth of students, you have half a section of students, and you still have to add a full teacher, so there's a trade off, you know, that you have to make. The other thing is, the staff still later changes, transportation, we're gonna need another person, and but also, that's also gonna have some impact on salaries, uh something else we need to look to. And again, that might also be offset by the increase in fees, that is part of our process of that, which is. Those are there, but what.
An an increase in bus fees then?
That's a possibility, I'm just saying that's one thing we can consider, 'cause that is part of every fund kind of preparation, one of the two areas you can take into account.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so a student moment, look, I get to use my new thing again, alright, I'm looking. So this is our overall student moment, so and these are projections that we get from the New England School Development Council, we got these last year. So we're, we don't have the most up to date one yet, we'll play coming along in January. And you can see that the the moment is kind of leveling off, we had this peak, which has now come down from, but it's starting to level off. But if we look at each individual school, so here's Ausgood, so we have this hu huge increase for Ausgood forecast over the next couple of years. And that's based on birth rates from a couple of years ago, from five years ago. So if, I mean, it's it's such a big jump, it's hard to, you know, we don't really know if that's really gonna happen, if it does, we definitely need to add a kindergarten class. And then that's gonna impact us in future years as that bubble moves up through the race. So you can see it through the Ausgood, and then here's Deer Hill, and again, Deer Hill is gonna, so that bubble then hits Deer Hill a few years. And then it hits the middle school further down, but you can see the middle school really tails off for the next few years before it picks up again. And the high school is even, you know, more significant, the s key continues to decline, but then we will see this bubble pick up again, you know, somewhere over here. So these, so we just, so obviously for next year, we're really looking at, we're seeing these, you know, slight decline in uh Deer Hill. The middle school up a little bit, and then coming down, high school continuing to come down, but Ausgood going up. So it's hard to see that we'll be able to make a significant reduction of these three in order to offset that increase, 'cause it's just too spread out. But as the reduction is spread out, but the increase is concentrated, so. Which is unfortunate. Alright, so I'm almost to the end. So budget priorities, so I haven't gone into a lot of detail on this. So these are the budget priorities, which you have seen, and which the principals are working towards, and we have received a bunch of requests, which are up to around six hundred thousand dollars worth of requests. So that's a, I mean, that, this is our starting point, it's the first pass, and then we'd expect to fund all of those at this point, but that's something we'll talk about, we're very good to prioritize it. But just looking at where we are, it's first pass, so we started last year, we just went to nearly three hundred and fifty seven thousand. Level service alone is three point two percent increase, those additional requirements, if we were to fund all of them from the budget, I don't expect we'll be, it'll be up another half percent. And those budget requests is another three percent on their own. So going back to the start, the other side of the balances, the town is saying they've only got three percent for it, so that doesn't even quite mean part of level service budget right now. So there's a bit of, so we have a imbalance between the what what the town's saying they have and what we're saying they need. And so that's what we're really gonna have to work through in a couple of months, a couple of months, like, or weeks. And so the first part of that, we talk into the principals, we're seeing what additional service providing requests they need, seeing which of those they really need next year or the future years. And then also going back to their level service to see whether there are other areas where they could reduce costs in order to get additional per additional resources.
Do these budget numbers and increases reflect the offsets from revolving and grants? They do?
Yes. Mm-hmm. I think I has I can. So the problem, I mean, part of the problem is, we have, I mean, fifty percent is not a lot of money when you have, uh, you know, it is a lot of money, but when you, but when we have these salary grades. So all teachers and staff move up a step, and and they get cost of living, so they're getting, so that alone is a huge part of that three percent. And we can, we'll go through all this in more detail in the state, and then future meetings, or some sort of quality. But so, I mean, if you imagine, sorry, that was the last thing I was gonna say, so last year when we got four percent, we were able to do these things and a little bit, and it's not a lot of it, but a little bit of it. It's four percent, you know, is, you know, that gets you, if you probably save some of this and get a little part of that, but now if it's only gonna be like three percent, it's almost. But we are not finished the process, and then how does it finish the process? What you hope is that we kind of come together, you know, like if we look at charter tuition, and maybe there's
Sure.
it's all impacted chapter seventy, we see that we're just a little, we get a little bit closer, we adjust our expectations, and what we hope is we need the middle, but I just wanna manage our expectations.
Yeah. To where we're gonna have expectations managed.
Yeah, thank you.
So Michael, on the on the salary um line, did you make any assumptions for retirements?
Yes. No, thank you, I didn't want to say that, so I don't have any yet, it's rather hopefully, so and
Okay.
you know, that's a that can have a big impact on the bill of funds, 'cause there's difference between top step and the voltage step, you know, and the top step or can be significant, it can help.
Could.
And and so then you would comment that fifty percent of the teachers are currently in the highest step, or will be in the highest step?
Yes, they could get it.
Yes, are currently in the highest step.
So so you accounted, I mean, that number's gonna move, right, and and if people, if we have no retirements.
Well, you mean next year, it'll increase even more, yeah.
Yeah, okay. But you accounted for that, okay.
Yes, so basically I take everybody and move them up a step, and they, so they get the new step, and we factor in a number for column changes. 'Cause as well as moving up steps, it could change columns, they could, they could move like more money up.
And do we know what projects the town is considering as part of their new growth? 'Cause there's a lot of chit chat about um perhaps some housing down behind um Parking Way, downtown in the village, behind like
Yeah.
where the gas station, somewhere down there, some housing units, um.
Yeah, yeah. So I know, I guess, as a short answer, I don't know whether I included, I think if you look at what was actually, you know, what's, you know, impairments, and for that to determine
Yeah.
was actually happening most of all.
'Cause I know there's been a few projects, I mean, nothing as massive as Avalon, but I know that there have been a few projects they're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Which would contribute to the the new growth.
Yes.
Does anyone have questions?
So there's a lot, there'll be lots more opportunities to questions, so I mean, and also, I mean, if you just want more information, or there's areas, or there's detail you want me to go into, just when you know, and I would be happy to try that. But so you, as well as these slides, there's also the fiscal paid forum slides, that also includes the line item budget, that's got comments, so you can have a quick look of any jumps, education wise, they're up so much, or they're down. And you know, some comments, but it's not like, you know, and there's also a list of all the positions that are included in the budget, so every, kind of like, what's your positions are included there, and so business manager, so.
So after the holidays, we'll start having um financing facility subcommittee meetings, talking about these things in more depth. And those meetings are always posted of the whole, so everybody is welcome to attend.
Yeah.
So we get into more of the nitty gritty.
Yeah, and one of the things I'm trying to, one of the things I will do is make sure all these documents are on the website, so that people can see them and can access them easily. And we'll also put together more of a narrative for all of these computers, the slides, but we'll also put together a document, give you some narrative, so you can read that part of the slide, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
John?
No, we we go to committee first.
Uh, okay, um, I I always find it helpful to know the per people expenditure.
Uh-huh.
And I I always find it helpful also to know the per people expenditure for each school, so that we know that we're sort of we're evenly funding students throughout the district.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that something that you could provide?
Yeah, very easily, pardon?
Yeah, that, you have that.
Yes, we have that, a.
You have it compared to other districts.
Yeah, so in some, there is some information in the fiscal, but it's not by school, but what's interesting is the state actually is, I mean, I will absolutely include that in future slides. But what's interesting is the state's now providing per people by school, which is a relatively new thing that they had to start with, title one or something. So you can actually see on the state state profiles, you can see i in the report cards, each school compared, you know, for all districts, but I will also. And actually, one of the things, so because the state's opted to provide that information, one of the things we are trying to make do is make sure that it's, we're making sure we're getting in the school level, and it's to the right school. 'Cause in the past, we've been doing, looking at that, so the the district, and now we're making sure it's at the school level.
Any any other members now?
I'm gonna yield my time.
Um, so Laura Soderbergh, sixteen, Black Forest Lane, quick question, uh, two quick questions. One, you mentioned a meeting on January sixth, that is an open meeting that I could attend, and that's where the building principals provide.
Yeah.
Is that then the third line or the fourth line there, the budget priority request?
Yeah, so they'll go into this, yes, that's where we'll talk for these items, they just hang up changes.
So we can see what kinds of items fall into those based upon the um priorities or focus of each of the building principals?
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Okay. And then the second question goes back to your numbers, where they got to start school later in any statutory impact.
Yeah.
Where does that, is that level service, is that additional requirements?
Well, I could have been additional requirements, but it's it's not funded in.
They're going. Okay.
But that's not to say I don't wanna get alarm bells during it, that's not to say it won't be funded, I just haven't included it in this first pass figure.
But that would be probably in that additional requirements.
Yeah, yeah, so so I, I mean, so I honestly, I envisaged that these, 'cause additional requirements are things that I think we're gonna have to fund.
Right.
But I just, a, but they're, but they're, but they're, but they're you, they're not really level service, 'cause they're additional.
So that would.
It's additional requirements. Yeah.
But a, and unnoticed, but it's worth highlighting, also, they will be offset by fees, uh kindergarten will definitely be offset by fees, 'cause a kindergarten person pays a fee.
Mm.
So that will not be offset through the budget, so that must be part of that as well.
Right, right. And then I notice in your fees, for the transportation fees, your estimate for next year was down by like twenty or thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Why, why are you thinking that bus ridership is going down?
So, no, so this is, so we have. No, so this is, so we have, we carry a balance in some of these, 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 we were, we were carrying some balance. It's not like we don't just budget everything we think we have. We just don't budget everything we're gonna get. We, because so there was some balance last year when we were doing this year's budget.
So we serve.
So we increased the amount to use up some of that budget, that balance. It's not there now, so we're about to be more like, let's just keep where we are. So there's, it's not that I think revenue's gone down, it's just that there's less money available in some of the budgets, some of the balances.
Michael, is that revenue or projected beginning balance?
It's neither. It's how much I think we're gonna offset the budget by.
So it's a combination of the beginning balance and all revenue?
Yeah, it's a combination of any balance, how much we think we're gonna get and where we wanna be at the end, because I don't want all the accounts being zero, because that's just too close to a.
Yeah. Right. Right.
For too close for comfort, you know, to carry a little bit in case we don't get as much next year. So we're kind of always.
So you're just eating at some of the beginning balance, you adjust then.
Yes, last year we ate away at the beginning balance, exactly.
Yeah. So it's not that the fees are down, or or the ridership will be down?
No.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep.
Although, seeing that ridership will be there a little bit because the.
Well, yeah, I was looking at that as well, too.
A little bit.
Yeah. Mm, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Great, thank you, Michael.
Okay, um next, our school committee comments communications. Um we'll go down the row. We'll start with Paul. Anything to report?
Oh, we did a walk through today. Uh we were all together for two hours and visited all the schools and uh we accompanied by the town manager, selectmen. People on the uh planning board and also the capital.
Yes. Ca- capital budget, yeah.
Yeah.
Capital budget.
And it was it was a great walkthrough and um I think we learned a lot from what we knew and um. Yeah, that was great to report. I also attended the uh financial forum.
Yes.
And uh I brought some friends that were very impressed and very interested and and uh quite impressed, so I'll say that um. Anything else? Seems to improve pretty well. That's off my head. Thanks.
Okay, okay, good. Ashley? Um so this subcommittees, right? Um on the diversity committee, I, a lot of you, I think, are on the emails that I've done.
Mm-hmm.
But we had a a meeting last week. It was very productive. Um we are, there are a couple of events upcoming. So the MLK breakfast is on Monday, January twentieth. And there's a Morningstar Baptist Church choir performance happening Sunday, January nineteenth um at First Parish. The MLK breakfast is at Saint Stephen's this year. Um we are continuing to sort of brainstorm about ways that we can um. Build on the what we found success of Dotland. So we're hopeful that we can continue to bring events like that into the community. And so for that reason, we're looking to start um a five oh one C three, uh the South Shore Unity Council, not just Cohacity, Cohasset. So we can raise some money to pay for those events. Um Safe Harbor, I went to a parent coffee this morning, which um was awesome. They've been um running parent coffees every so often. Um every, it's regularly. The next one is on January twenty second and Principal Mills is actually gonna go. Um so they just talk, it's um Allison Bryan, who's a parent in the district and a member of the Safe Harbor Coalition, helps sort of facilitate a conversation between parents about things that their kids are dealing with and that they're dealing with. Um it's nice. Uh I went to the Safe Harbor meeting. Um. The main point of discussion was the town has decided to give Safe Harbor, I think it's seventy five hundred dollars to supplement the work that they're doing. Because the grant that that's funding them specifically only allows them to use the funds for ages twelve to seventeen. And um so they're brainstorming about the way that they think best to use the extra seventy five hundred dollars. So that's an ongoing conversation. Um one thing that they discussed in that meeting, which I found sort of surprising, is that. I don't wanna misquote it. I'm ninety nine percent sure that this is what was said. Thirteen percent of high school students report that their parents allow them and their friends to drink in their home when they're there. That's so alarming. And I encourage anyone who might be watching to just read up on the social host law, because there's a whole lot of liability attached to that. And it's just scary from like a community perspective. Like we don't want something horrible happening in our community and that is a recipe for something horrible happening.
One of the places the social host law was reviewed is at WES, I suppose.
Yes. Right. And at the safe, was it at the safe schools? Thank you. Or no?
Uh no, the Y O B S data was, um but I don't think that was really spoken of.
Okay, okay. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay.
The social host law came about because of an incident in Cohasset.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um and the last thing I'll say is I am on this task force for the sheriff.
Yes.
And um I don't remember if I reported on the meeting that I went to, but it's a productive conversation. I'm really enjoying it. And the sheriff actually has asked if he can come to the next Safe Harbor meeting to um talk to the group. Um so well, not the next one, sorry. He's coming in February on the fourth. Um so he's gonna come and address the Safe Harbor Coalition and take questions. And so if anyone's interested in participating in that conversation, they can come to the February fourth meeting of Safe Harbor Coalition.
Awesome. Thank you. Um you had sent me a note about high school council?
Yes. So my work schedule, um I I sort of, when we were planning the school committee calendar, I had most of my travel dates in my calendar. And I was able to like say that I was gonna be gone certain weeks, but what's happening is my um role as school committee liaison on the, or school committee participant on the high school school council is. I'm sort of leaving that unfulfilled. Regrettably, I really was excited about participating in that, but my work's travel schedule has caused me to miss all of the school council meetings. And so I was wondering if anyone else on the committee might be interested in fulfilling that role because I can't.
I'm on the middle school and I'm having a hot time, too.
What time does it meet, actually? Two, two thir- two thirty.
Yeah, after school, anyway.
It's it's um typically, I I I would step up and do it because I did it before and I loved it. Um I have a new work situation where I'm gonna be commuting. For the first time in twelve years, which is horrible to Canton. Oh my god. So um I just ha- I have to look at that. I mean, I I.
It's weird. Commuting from Cohasset, huh?
I can tackle it the next couple of times.
Okay.
Um and then I just have to see uh.
Maybe we could share that responsibility. I don't mind doing it maybe a month, I mean, or.
I had.
Because I mean, hey, in fact.
Yeah, um.
It'll tell you that. You're non-voting members, you're.
We're not, we're non, we're non-voting members, yeah, no. So uh I I I know everybody else, Craig, I think you're always good.
So you're really advising.
That's correct.
And on Deer Hill. And you're Deer Hill and you're middle school. So so let me see if I can, if I can work it into um.
I wouldn't mind uh doing that as well.
Okay. So maybe you and I could tag team a little bit if I have, and we'll plan it out.
It's uh. Yeah. Yeah, I just have to know in advance so I can get coverage for, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, excellent.
Thank you. I apologize.
No, sorry. Um Jen? I don't have anything and I don't know, the odd, the Deer Hill School Council meeting got canceled. Um and so I actually, I have nothing to report. Okay, Craig?
So Lieutenant Eval will be meeting after the holidays, so we can discuss St. Patrick's School and have a little bit longer on that.
Okay.
Looking forward to it. Maybe the second week, we could, second week.
That works, yeah.
Um and I'm just gonna reserve my comments for after we do the minutes. So um which is next? We have minutes for Wednesday, November sixth. I had emailed them out. If um people didn't have time to read them, we can hold until the next meeting if you wish.
Do you mind holding it until the next? I think we can chance to read them.
I have, I don't mind holding it until the next meeting because, is that all right with everybody?
Amen.
Okay. Um so uh Paul touched on the the two things that he and I both attended, the walkthrough today and the fiscal forum. And I would just um like to say to everyone, I hope everyone has a great holiday season. Um because we're not gonna meet again until after the new year and that we all have time to enjoy with our families and friends and relax. And as we end twenty nineteen, even though it's the middle of the school year, um I feel very blessed to be part of this group. And to be working with such tremendous tremendous educators, administrators and leaders in our district. And um I feel very confident about our district moving forward. So um I don't have to ask Santa for anything. I feel like, I feel like in our educational community, to be a little corny, we already have it. So um and I wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Mm-hmm.
And to our faithful audience members as well. So um did we need to go into executive session?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Okay, so that being said, can I have a, I'm sorry?
So move.
I have a one.
Um.
Oh.
Before we, do we wanna talk about, yeah, we should go.
Yeah, yeah. A- actually, yes, we will go into executive session. Um sorry. Yeah.
I'm glad.
No, um for um, actually, it's number four for safety and security.
No, I'm glad.
Sure.
Um exemption number four. So can I go motion to move into executive session at ten forty two P M?
So move.
Thanks.
Second.
Okay. Um all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry. I, Paul Kearney.
I, Ashley.
I, Ellen Mark.
I, Jen Madden.
I, Craig McCollum.
Okay, first number four. Thank you very much. Okay.
Good question. See you, have a good New Year's.
Thank you, Amy. Merry Christmas. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, Amy.
So glad you left it. Stay awake, otherwise I would have been asleep.
Put camera on. Yeah, no, we're gonna, we're gonna turn it off. Um.